May I have a motion to open the public board meeting? Moved by Commissioner Hassan, second. Second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Vote nine zero to reopen the public board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request a presentation of colors from the JROTC at Excel Academy at Francis M. Wood High School. I'd like to thank and recognize our student performers from Booker T. Washington Middle School for the Arts under the direction of Mr. Jared Perry, Javon Jones, Sinia Tyson, Angela Baker, Angel Baker, my bad, Naeisha Boxdale, Zariah Stringfield, Dwayne Johnson, Devonte Hearns, Jaden Yeomans, Kamani Lewis, Kayla Missouri, Jermaine Smith, Madison Green, Isaiah McGruder, Cliff Wilson, and Shakur Brooks. And also want to thank and acknowledge the JROTC from Excel Academy at Francis M. Wood High School, Cadet Corinne Wilson, Cadet Samaya Smith, Cadet Jordan Russell, Cadet Corey Payne, Cadet Tanaya Rose. Thanks to both of our teams of students. I'd now like to turn to Commissioner Chinia who will request a moment of silence.
Please join me as we acknowledge the students and members of the Baltimore City School family who we've lost recently. Ray Glasgow III was an 11th grader at Baltimore City College. He was the epitome of a model student and athlete. He was every teacher and coach's dream. Ray put forth great effort in the classroom, working hard to achieve success in the challenging IB curriculum. As an athlete, he excelled in two sports, lacrosse and football. He was the captain of the winning city lacrosse team, already receiving college recognition for his skills on the field as a junior. Ray continually demonstrated the leadership, skill set, and sportsmanship qualities warranted in an athlete. In football, he was on pace to be an integral part of this upcoming season's game plans, demonstrating the same qualities and character as in lacrosse. Ray will be truly missed, not only as a very good student, but as a fine young man, full of respect, humility, honesty, commitment, and promise. Sky Brown was a 7th grader who received her entire education at Tench Chilman Elementary Middle School. She was feisty, bold, energetic, and ready for a challenge. She often participated in the after-school program as well as talent shows. She loved dancing, modeling, and entertaining her family and friends with her personality, leaving them full of laughter. Sky will be greatly missed by her family, her school community, and friends. Tyree S. Graham, aka Reese, was an 11th grader at Forest Park High School. He suddenly departed this life on May 16, 2018, due to a medical condition. At Forest Park Senior High School, Tyree pursued his dreams of working in the culinary arts. Tyree loved to cook, listen to music, and hang out with his friends. He was also a diehard Pittsburgh Steeler fan. Tyree was a very ambitious young man who knew how to provide for himself and his family, whether through selling water bottles or selling dinners. His smile was infectious, and he was truly loved by everyone that knew him. On June 2, 2018, Tyree's parents received his posthumous diploma as part of Forest Park's 130th commencement. It was an emotional and celebratory occasion for the entire audience, but especially for Tyree's friends, the Forest Park High School educators, and his family. It is with deep regret we inform you of the passing of Yeti Lockett Gooden, who served in the city schools for over 40 years. Ms. Lockett Gooden began her career with city schools as a teacher at Liberty Elementary School in September of 1973. Over the course of her full-time employment with city schools, which spanned 35 years, she served in several capacities, including support teacher and assistant principal at Frankfurt Intermediate School and Yorkwood Elementary. In July of 1992, Ms. Lockett Gooden assumed the principal position at Garrett Heights Elementary Middle School, where she served staff and students for 17 years. Dedicated to the Baltimore City community as well as to the work of city schools, she continued to work after her retirement in 2009 on a temporary basis at district office from 2010 to 2016 with the Department of Operations and Grants and Student Assessment. Ms. Lockett Gooden unfortunately departed on Sunday, May 27, 2018, and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and the city schools' community. Please join me in a moment of silence for these students and this staff person from our school system.
Can I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from prior open session? Moved by Commissioner Berkeley, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Motion passes 10-0 with student commissioner voting. I'd now like to have a motion to approve the summary of closed session. Moved by Commissioner Canham. Second by Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Motion passes 9-0 with the student commissioner abstaining. I'd like to turn to our committee chairs to give a report on their most recent committee meetings. I believe we've had a committee meeting since the last...we have not?
No.
So, operations does not have a report?
No, we don't have a report, and the meeting will be on June 19 in this room from 10:00 to 11:15.
Okay. Policy Committee?
Policy has not met since our last public board meeting, but I'd like to reiterate an invitation for the public to join us in crafting and beginning an initial conversation on the Baltimore City Schools' equity policy. We will be meeting from 4 to 6 p.m. Public sign up is, I believe, open the Thursday beforehand by calling either the board office or emailing board@bcps.k12.md.us. We're looking forward to getting the public's input prior to the beginning of crafting of this policy.
Teaching and Learning?
The Teaching and Learning Committee met on...this is June, right? Okay, on the 5th, I'm sorry. My month's ready, they're flying along. We had a report on the compliance report on charter schools, that review. We also received a report on middle and high school choice process. I think the committee had some questions, and we're probably going to look more deeply into that process and how it's working. And we also had a recommendation regarding the English Language Arts curriculum adoption, and that will be a part of the, actually, our business this evening. The Teaching and Learning Committee also had a...that was our second meeting in trying a new format in the afternoon where we were open for public comment. We felt that that was very successful. Our next meeting will be back in the morning on June 26 at 9:00 a.m. in this room. We'll be looking at our schedule for next year and doing a review of our piloting of our time. So you're invited, if you'd like to join us, at 9 o'clock on June 26.
Great, thanks. I wanted to note, as part of...I have just a few comments for the board chair. I wanted to note that the mayor's office has officially requested statements of interest for serving on the school board. This was posted on June 5, and will stay open for 30 days. It's also going to be posted on the city schools' website, but that'll take you to the link to the...give you a link that'll take you directly to the mayor's website. This process has always been open for anybody, any resident of Baltimore City, to express an interest and submit their statement of interest and the other required documents. But Mayor Pugh and her team have done a terrific job of letting people know about this opportunity. I don't think it was that widely advertised before, which was unfortunate, so this is a much better process. If you have questions about what it is involved in serving in the board, I'm sure that any one of us would be willing to discuss that with you, but if you have any questions about the process, we would direct you to the mayor's office, because it is a process managed by the mayor's office. I just wanted to note that I attended, a couple weeks ago, the first ever event organized to recognize volunteers in city schools, parents, community members, just a wide range of people that I'm looking at, and I'm seeing a lot of you now, I'm looking at you right now, from Lindhurst, people that, you know, really show up to help. This was organized by the engagement staff, and there were lots of volunteers there. Some were recognized for their outstanding service, but it was really a celebration of everybody. And they handed out a form that kind of highlighted the range of roles that volunteers provide: mentor, coach, out-of-school time, hall monitor, classroom aide, chaperone, tutor, cafeteria aide, main office help, and other. And I'm sure "other" is like 15 other things. I was happy to know that this...that we were doing this, and so it's the first ever, and I'm sure we're going to do it every year, because I don't think there's enough times that we can thank people for what they do to come and help on their own time, the kids. Some federal organization, the Corporation for National and Community Service, estimates that the national average value...I don't know how they figure this out. The national average value for a donated hour of time is $23.56. So at six hours per day for 180 school days, a single volunteer would have donated $25,445 in time and services. So we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people in this community who come and volunteer, and I was glad that we recognized you, because it really does make a difference. So thank you very much. Finally, on a somewhat melancholy note, I want to acknowledge that this is Commissioner Canham's last board meeting. So we do have a special board meeting on June 26, but we're only convening to vote on a PEP agenda, so this is really sort of his last official board meeting. His term is ending, and he will naturally rotate off the board. We'll do a more appropriate and complete acknowledgement of...to recognize Peter's service and leadership, but I did want to acknowledge now, because he'll just won't be here anymore, and thank him publicly for all that you've done. Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge a gift of $5,000, 5,000 baseball game tickets and box suite for the Teacher of the Year Celebration, which has a value of $95,000 during City Schools' Night at Camden Yards from the Baltimore Orioles. Yeah, did you go? Awesome. Did they win? You don't even know.
Yes, they did. They did, that was one night they won.
I'd now...we're going to now take a vote on the personnel and quasi-judicial matter portion of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the PEP agenda and the two appeals and hearings cases? Motion from Commissioner Hassan, second. Second from Commissioner Chinia, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson, vote in favor 9-0 on that portion of the consent agenda. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the CEO for her comments.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Kashani. I just want to add my deep thanks to Commissioner Canham, just for all of his work throughout the years and all of his support as well. So I'd like to invite Chief Jeremy Grant Skinner for tonight's PEP agenda.
Good evening, commissioners and Dr. Santalisis. I walked a little bit extra slowly, because I know that there are some individuals who are in the overflow room in Room 120 who are on this list, so I know that some of them are on their way here now, and I will start with a couple of individuals who I know couldn't be...couldn't be here with us tonight. So first, Smytha Hughes, currently a teacher at Kelvin M. Rodwell Elementary School, is appointed Educational Specialist for Mathematics Initiatives, effective June 20. Second, Catherine Martin, currently Educational Specialist II for Literacy, is appointed Coordinator Literacy Blueprint, effective July 1. Great, some people, I think, are now here. Christopher Wan, currently manager of Program Evaluation, is appointed Interim Director for Research Services, effective June 20. He may be here in a moment. Mark Lalonde, currently principal resident at the Mount Washington School, is appointed principal of the Mount Washington School, effective July 1. Timothy Gordon, currently Assistant Principal at Green Street Academy, is appointed principal of Green Street Academy, effective July 1.
Chris is here now too, Chris Wan.
Great, I will repeat that Chris Wan, currently manager of Program Evaluation, is appointed interim director of Research Services, effective June 20. Pamela Zalando, currently principal resident at Walter P. Carter Elementary Middle School, is appointed Academic Content Liaison for Mathematics, effective June 20. Tracy Pratt, currently principal at Dr. Carter G. Woodson Elementary Middle School, is appointed interim principal at Gilmore Elementary School, effective July 1 through June 30 of 2019. Luis Espinoza, currently Assistant Principal at Lakeland Elementary Middle School, is appointed Assistant Principal Academy for College and Career Exploration, effective July 1. And finally, Jalima Aliseya, currently Coordinator of Specialized Instruction, is appointed Director of Specialized Learning, effective June 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner. I want to, just for, as has become our practice, for those individuals who have just been appointed principal, I would like to read just a few additional lines. We just heard that Mark Lalonde was just appointed as principal at the Mount Washington School. Mr. Lalonde has spent much of his educational career in Washington, D.C., where he served as dean of students and master educator, supporting a cohort of schools. Last year, he joined city schools as a resident principal at Mount Washington School, and he will be assuming the principalship. Tim Gordon is a resilient school leader. He has been serving children in Baltimore City for 13 years. Mr. Gordon is known as a servant leader, always willing to put children first. He is results-oriented and is dedicated to bettering communities in Baltimore. The Green Street Academy School community is proud to call Mr. Gordon their, quote, "new principal," and that was in quotes. Tracy Pratt, Tracy, Principal Pratt now officially, is a resourceful instructional leader with a commitment to academic success and social-emotional well-being for all students. She is committed to the mission of city schools and the students we serve, as demonstrated by her 20 years of service. Principal Pratt has spent an incredible amount of that career in the very community that she will be serving. We welcome Tracy to Gilmore Elementary School as interim principal. As our final note on human capital, we invite you to join with a new working group that is forming to develop and build plans to further increase the number of Black teachers in city schools. We know that students benefit, both from teachers who represent a diversity of backgrounds and from role models with whom they can readily identify. While the percentage of teachers who identify as African-American is higher today than at any time in the last seven years, we are committed to expanding the range of our recruitment and retention strategies, with special focus on recruiting and retaining even more teachers of color, and in this case specifically, Black teachers. Following public testimony from teachers and community advocates earlier this year, some of those individuals in the Human Capital Office collaborated to launch this working group. There are multiple ways to get involved. Please look for information on our website next week if you are interested. Staff who are interested in participating should look for more information in the next issue of City School News. Interested community members will find more information in the next City Schools' Connect newsletter. Thank you. I would also like to take the opportunity right now to acknowledge the presence of Ray Glasgow Jr.'s parents, if they are still here. Are you here? Oh, they're right here. Hi, how are you? Huh? Oh, you're Tyree Graham's parents, okay. And the parents, so first are Ray Glasgow's parents here? Okay. And then I'd like to acknowledge, thank you, the presence of Tyree Graham's parents here with us this evening. We share with you your love. Thank you for coming on. I would also like to take this opportunity right now to thank several members of city schools' community for their leadership on behalf of our schools and students. The Enrollment Task Force was created more than a year ago to develop and implement and really expand and increase our efforts to sustain student enrollment in city schools. As one part of this effort, last November, we created, at my request, three working groups to develop recommendations, or an initial set of recommendations, in three critical areas: marketing and public relations, enrollment and retention, and customer service. Leading these work groups involved a significant investment in time and energy and resulted in a first round, not an only round or a final round, but a first round of solid, actionable recommendations for recruiting and retaining students in city schools. As their work concludes, and as I promised weeks ago, I am very pleased to recognize our work group leaders with thanks for their hard work and dedication. Commissioner Johnatt Richardson, who led the enrollment and retention work group; Annie Millie, Executive Director of Live Baltimore, who led the marketing and public relations group; and Paul Wolman, who took the lead on the customer service group. I think it goes without saying that better customer service goes hand-in-hand with the culture of care, which is what the Enrollment Task Force is trying to engender. Please join me in giving our work group leaders a warm round of applause, as I now also introduce Joe Strake, who will give a brief presentation on the task force recommendations and the results of this very important project. Thank you to all who participated, and a job well done.
Hi, all, Joe Strake. I'm going to be as brief as possible. This was a tremendous amount of work, and I'm honored to be presenting it on behalf of Dr. Santalisis, and I'm honored to present it in front of the board and the public. So Baltimore City has a population of about 610,000 people, so we engaged hundreds in this work, but we know there's a lot more work to be done, so echoing Dr. Santalisis' statements, you know, this is one of the first steps in improving our enrollment and retention strategies. With me is Dr. Nicole Stewart, a guru of statistics and maps, and she's going to help me here.
So we just wanted to provide some context for the presentation that Joe will be doing tonight on the task force efforts. So the graph that you're looking at right now is the enrollment trends over the last 10 or so years for city schools, and as you all are aware, we've experienced a third-year consecutive decline since our most recent peak in school year 1415. And what we do know is that city schools' enrollment is impacted by a lot of exterior factors, such as the population decline in Baltimore City. We've seen about a 10,000 resident decline over the last two years. We know that the percentage of families with children in Baltimore has decreased about 12% since 2010, and so those are some of the things that are impacting our enrollment, where we've seen losses. The majority...our highest losses have been in the K through 5 grade band, as well as high school overtime. And what we do know also is that when we look at where students live and we look at the concentration of where our students are located across the city, we know that we've experienced those losses in that K through 5 grade band in areas that are experiencing various housing changes and challenges across the city. So some of our areas that are experiencing high rates of vacancies. And so that's just to give you an idea of some of the factors that have been influencing city schools' enrollment. And then what the other graph that you're looking at right now is our projected enrollment over time, so of course, our enrollment projections are based on a three-year trend. And so what you're seeing here is what that trend has looked like every year, where we've been experiencing this three-year decline. And so what the blue line represents is what our projections are for the next five years out, and that projection has just been declining over the last couple of years because of that enrollment decline trend.
Thank you. So this was a proactive step for Dr. Santalisis to organize this group, and that kind of falls into this plan, this bigger plan of a blueprint for excellence to provide a quality education for all of our students throughout the city. The second real step of this was our amazing partnership with the BTU to create the B3 Initiative last summer, which was a door-knocking campaign, and this was kind of that third step, the Enrollment Task Force. And as Dr. Santalisis mentioned, the task force was a group of experts in various fields, and that scope of work was narrowed into three work groups that were previously mentioned, which were led by the amazing individuals that Dr. Santalisis mentioned. Those work groups are here. I'm sorry that I'm rushing, and I really am not doing these groups justice because of the sheer amount of hours that they used and the amount of sleepless nights that they spent working on this information. So onboard docs underneath the Enrollment Task Force section are the three final recommendation papers. papers by these workgroups, as well as an executive summary of Dr. Santalisis's initial recommendations based on that. So I definitely think everybody should read these. They're amazing, amazing recommendations. We're not going to do all of them. We may do all of them. We'll see what happens, which leads me to, actually, I'm going to get there in a minute. So the three workgroups had these kind of recurring themes, right? Initially, we had three different workgroups, but then as time went on, we really realized that there were overlapping themes throughout. So the first thing is that City Schools really needs to focus on customer service, and that we need to have a culture shift in that aspect to create a culture of care, and that'll impact every single aspect of what we're seeing. So we need to really have our schools in high standard, and through customer service, we anticipate that that will permeate through all aspects of the school environment. And we obviously want to keep our high-quality principals, our high-performing teachers and administrative staff, and if they feel supported and celebrated, that, you know, we'll continue to see results, because it's proven time and time again that the longer that principals and teachers are in the same buildings, that the more successful they become. Another piece on principals is we want to see them really take ownership of the enrollment in their schools. So we need it to be a full-time priority, where everyone is constantly thinking about enrollment and how we can get more kids. You saw our amazing band from Booker T. Washington Middle School. I mean, these are stories that you're going to see some chess champions in a little bit. There are amazing things happening in Baltimore City throughout our schools that we just don't know about, and, you know, we want people to be able to go to open houses. We want, we want schools to be a warm and welcoming environment, where if someone's on the fence of enrolling, they'll be able to easily access their school and be able to see what a great environment they are. But we need to have those doors open, and we need to have our principals be ambassadors for their school in order for that to occur. Another item is, we've heard time and time again, if you go on Facebook, if you read emails, that our enrollment process, as well as our choice process, is confusing. So that was something that we heard over and over again, so we're really looking at, you know, making that easier and more accessible for all. And then the last piece, as I mentioned, is the blueprint, where good schools are going to attract people. So we want to improve the quality of all of our schools throughout the city. It's an issue of equity, that we want all, all children to have access to an amazing education, and the blueprint really laid down the foundation for that. And with, with that blueprint, we're hoping that that will naturally increase enrollment, because enrollment follows quality. So lastly, recommendations. We're going to create an initially internal advisory group to really comb through those recommendations that I had discussed, the final recommendation papers made by our workgroups, to talk about initial implementation and the feasibility of all the recommendations, because as you'll see if you read through them, there are a lot of really good recommendations, which we obviously couldn't implement all at once. We definitely want to reimagine our enrollment choice and transfer office, to make it a welcoming environment, to really be able to allow our families the easily-accessible information on how to enroll in pre-K, you know, and a lot of questions that we continuously get. We're going to continue the B3 door-knocking campaign this summer with the BTU, which is really exciting. We, the greatest amount of students that we're seeing that don't enroll in City Schools never come here. So we're really looking at the zero-to-five-year-old range, where we only begin our communication with people once they start in City Schools, and we really want to start looking at, you know, at families that have children zero to five, to really get them in that front door, so that they see what great things are happening in our schools. And lastly, we, we need more qualitative data. We need to know why people are leaving. Right now, if people leave to go to another county, if they leave to go to private school, if they leave to go to homeschooling, we don't really have good data as to why they're leaving. So that's something that we're definitely going to look into. And next steps, in addition to the internal advisory group, we're going to work with City Council, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant and Multicultural Affairs, and involve more community groups, grassroots community groups, throughout the city. And you'll see over the next couple of weeks that we're going to begin posting dates and locations for enrollment kind of customer service sessions, so those will be communicated through the board, you know, and on our website. So we also created this email address. We want to hear from everybody. So one of the easiest ways to do that is enrollmentstrategies@bcps.k12.md.us. If you want to be involved in a meeting, if you want to, if you have a suggestion, if you have any kind of input to offer, this is the easiest way to get ahold of us at enrollmentstrategies@bcps. As I said, please read those recommendations, they're amazing, and we will periodically come before probably a committee or potentially the board with updates on how this progress is going. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I just want to stress that those, I want to say thank you to both Joe and Nicole there, work with the group. Again, Annie Millie's here, there were others, Commissioner Richardson. I do want to say this, and just echo something that Joe said, that the actual power in their recommendations, I don't think comes out as strongly in kind of our summation about what we're going to do. And I do encourage the public to log on, to read those recommendations. Two, I just want to remind everybody, this was the first step to what's an ongoing process. And I think some of what was, some of my most striking takeaways, and I'm sure many here tonight, as well as many who are watching, won't necessarily be surprised, but just how poignantly the message was that some of our easiest ground, or our first ground to take, really is around how do we do a better job effectively communicating with parents their options, streamlining that, the amount of kind of misinformation about all the processes, from how to get your child enrolled to, and we actually had, I won't say from whom, but we actually had samples from blogs that are real kind of communications and Facebook exchanges with parents trying to figure out what should actually be self-evident. And then there were a number of heavy recommendations around our whole, our whole approach to enrollment choice and transfer, and we have had much feedback from many sectors of our community who have said, in addition to a Fund for Educational Excellence report, that has said, we really need to do some overhaul. And I say overhaul, because it wasn't just around the fridges, around how we get parents that information, families, and frankly, other community organizations to help us get that message out. And then finally, what we all know, which was the theme after theme about the importance of families' interactions with their local school, the local school's ability to answer parents' questions, and the fact that we do have schools within Baltimore City that do an excellent job at this, and families who are very pleased. The challenge that we have is making sure that we standardize some of that kind of communication and care. So I just want to thank again the committees for all of their work. The, the next steps that Joe presented really are just next steps, and that we'll be diving more deeply, Commissioner.
I just wanted to first thank you, Dr. Santalisis, for inviting this process to move forward. I believe that the committee's members worked as hard as they did, because they have confidence in you and your team to really listen to what the recommendations are and follow them through. I also wanted to thank our Chair, Commissioner Kashiani. She, I don't know how she found the time to do this, but she put her heart and soul into it. She believed in it. She never gave up on it. I think the outcomes show that. And also Joe, too, who's not, I don't see where he is, but between Joe and Cheryl, I don't know how many emails they've had between each other. The final thing I just wanted to say was, was a statistic. In terms of the business case for enrollment, if you think about it, and I think Annie pointed this out in one of the presentations, if we, if our intentional efforts are successful in just recruiting five students to the district, that's $95,000 of new money to the district. So we can multiply five times 100, that's new money to the district, or, or money that we would have lost from our students going somewhere else. So there is a business case to us doing this, because it's the bottom line, is we need these revenues to produce the kind of outcomes we want. So thank you again.
No, thank you, and I'll add my thanks to Chair Kashiani, just for her work in really leading this effort. And I think that the quality of the recommendations that the committees came up with, that these were not milquetoast kinds of recommendations, speaks to exactly what you're saying, so thank you. So as CEO of City Schools, there's nothing more rewarding for me than seeing our students overcome challenges to achieve their potential. And tonight, I will just take a bit of privilege of recognizing a young man who I think his story represents a number of our young people, but who I have had the privilege, like many of our team, of having just been blessed, frankly, by his presence and his work with the student media team, which means that we get a chance to see him more closely, just because we get to see him more often. And I am very pleased to recognize Xavier Plater, because in a world where Xavier and many of his peers face many obstacles, he is truly a testament to the fact that you would never know it. He always has a smile. He's always engaged. He always asks incredibly amazing questions. And he really, for, I think, our team in particular, is this year's student who is, who represents the resilience and the potential of all of our young people. Xavier honed his passion for film by working in digital media in support of our communications team. Last year, he produced his own documentary film and was inspired to attend the Elite Digital Media Program at Maryland Institute College of Art. Through his talent, determination, and support from staff members, Xavier was accepted in the MICA program, but he still faced the challenge of securing financial aid. Earlier this month, we received the exciting news that Xavier had been awarded a guaranteed access grant from the Maryland Higher Education Commission, which will enable him to attend MICA this fall. Please join me in congratulating Xavier Plater on his determination and his relentless pursuit of it.
He's like, he's like, I don't want a picture, I take pictures.
I thought I was going to go sit over there and give my thanks. Nice. The anticipation in here was like, oh my God, CEO. So I just, you know, I just would like to say that, you know, the saying that they say, you know, it takes a village to raise a child, and, you know, to a lot of people, it may sound cliche, but, you know, to me, like, you know, it's, it's everything, because it literally took a village to raise me, and a village to get me into, you know, my number-one dream college. And I, you know, I would, I just, you know, just want to thank, you know, you know, Dr. Santalisis, you know, the student media team, District of Communication team, the Recording Arts Media Production Program, CBS, Echo Media, Johns Hopkins, YPR, you know, the Maryland Business Roundtable. It is so many, so many, so many other, other, other amazing, you know, businesses and companies, and, you know, just people and places. I'm sorry, I can't name everybody, because if I start naming people, I'm going to forget names, but, you know, I didn't come from the best environment, you know, and I think what really actually changed my life was, you know, taking the chance out to accept an opportunity, you know, just raising my hand and just taking the initiative to, you know, to put myself up front, because if I just allowed my environment and what I've gone through, you know, consume me and to keep me, you know, in disparity, I wouldn't be here talking to you guys right now, you know. And, you know, I grew from, you know, the heart of, you know, the heart of West Baltimore, you know, and probably some of these areas that a lot of people was growing up from and not making it out alive. And, you know, I just want to give, you know, most of our thanks to, you know, to the glory to, you know, Jesus Christ, you know, because at the end of the day, you know, if you don't, you know, if you don't have that, that faith, a lot of people were saying, like, man, your GPA, your grades, where you're from, your skin complexion, it ain't, it ain't a lot of, a lot of that getting out of here, you know. And someone once told me, you know, if you want to get into MICA, it's like taking a half-court shot in the dark. And I was like, a half-court shot in the dark? That sounds like, you know, like taking a shot blindfolded, right? You know, something like that. And, you know, the whole time in my mind, I was just like, you know, you're saying that, but I'm not, I'm seeing more than what you're seeing. You know what I'm saying? Even though, you know, you know, everything, at the end of the day, is, is not what it seems, even though, like, the room may seem dark, life may seem like terrifying, you know, your environment may be consuming you, like, at the end of the day, like, if you keep that faith and keep putting that step forward, I don't care who you are, I don't care where you're from, you know, you're going to make it, you know. And, you know, I just, I just appreciate everybody for just, you know, staying with me these, these years, because, you know, I recently came out of nervous breakdown not too long ago, and then after that, you know, the Lord just skyrocketed my life, and, you know, it's, thank you all, just thank you, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Bon, Commissioner Bondima would like to say a word to you.
Hold on a second.
We have, we have, we have a question for you?
I just want to say to you.
No, no, you're good, you're good.
You can stand, you can, whatever.
On moving and everything, it's not even my turn to move. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, guys.
Just, just one thing I'd like to say to you, how proud everybody here, the board and everybody in this room, because we're all family, okay? And I'm just hoping that we have the TV cameras here today, and I'm hoping that the TV cameras catch, capture all that you've said and done, and all those beautiful things that's happening in Baltimore City Public School, and you are the product of those beautiful things that's happening. And we won't just hear the negatives, we will hear such a beautiful positive when we hear the news this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Xavier.
Thank you.
Just a little commercial break, and Dr. Santalisis comments. I was remiss in not acknowledging that this is Ashley Pena's last official board meeting as well, our student commissioner. She's on her way to Maryland. And we, we went all crazy about her full scholarship the last time we talked about it, but we want to just acknowledge you again, and thank you for your service on the board.
Great. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. And again, this is the best part of the job.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. You're good.
Okay, good, good. Because, you know, this time I was like, you know, I don't want to hop to the line, you know what I'm saying?
In April, the Baltimore Kids Chess League sent three teams of City School students to the USCF National K through nine Chess Championships in Atlanta. I am very pleased to announce that all three of these teams returned to Baltimore with hard-earned team trophies. Roland Park Roland Park Elementary Middle took sixth place in the U-1000 section out of 36 teams, while Baltimore Montessori Public Charter tied for ninth in the U-750 section out of 44 teams, and Mount Washington Elementary Middle finished 18th. The Baltimore Kids Chess League had the best results at the Nationals of any, any scholastic chess program from the entire state of Maryland. Let's welcome Chris Cook from Baltimore Kids Chess League and invite all our participants to come forward and receive their Certificates of Merit. Jerome Brown and Rose Brown. When I call your name, you guys can come on up. You ready? Jerome Brown and Rose Brown, Nora Bushjager, Hadeem Fall, Harrison Lardner and Julian Lardner. Oh, I hear you all. Come right on up. There you go. There you go. Adam Pennington and Travis Pennington and Caesar, Josh and Naomi Salzar Alvarado. I want to be in this picture that's my size. We are so proud of you all. And Rose Brown. And Rose Brown. And Rose, there you go. Nora. Congratulations. Oh, thank you so much, Congress. Thank you so much. Kadine, congratulations. Harrison. Julian. Adam. Okay, and Travis, good night. Salzar, did I say it correctly? Caesar, okay, thank you. Josh. And Naomi. Congratulations, y'all. Can we take a picture? Is that all right? Okay, I'll get a picture.
You're gonna show your awards bases on here. Cover your faces up.
Congratulations.
Appreciation of the Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School Chess Team. We'd like to give you this. In appreciation for, from the Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School, we'd like to give you this shirt in recognition.
So, my question is, does that mean now that when I put on this sweatshirt, I become a chess master? Is that what that means? You don't know, right? That's okay. Thank you, everybody. Much appreciated.
That is awesome. They're so adorable.
Were you in the picture? Yeah, thanks. I finally met my match. I told Jeanette not to say a word.
Finally, I would like to welcome Bishan Smith, Executive Director of the Center for Supportive Schools, who will describe the Center's successful Peer Group Connection model in which older students in high school and middle school work with incoming students to ease their transition and improve school climate. Bishan is joined by Macio Cooper, STEM Instructional Support Lead at Frederick Douglass High School, Sean Stovall, a student at Douglas, and Taylor Shaw, a student at Edmondson Westside High School. And I do want to be able to say that because of the leadership that these young people have shown, because of the work of Center for Supportive Schools, we are really pleased to announce that we are expanding to city middle schools this program as well to provide additional leadership opportunities for a lot of our middle school students. So, I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you very much. Okay, is that good? Thank you very much for allowing me to be here. I'm Dr. Bishan Smith, and I only have five minutes. I can literally talk about this program for five hours. I met the Center for Supportive Schools in school year 2012, 13, when I was over the Office of Attendance Insurance for Baltimore City Public Schools and have since then been really amazed by the work that they're doing and am honored to be here representing this work. And so, I have three amazing people to my left and to my right, and so I'm just going to highlight three points because I promise you that they are more worthy of your time and attention than I am. I did share about six slides that will give you some, a high-level view of what peer group connection is, but I'm gonna share three points in particular. One, it is a national, school-based, research-based, peer-to-peer mentoring model that has been recognized by the Department of Education as a best-practice program. We leverage the power of older students to support the needs of younger students. Specifically, in the middle school model, we are using eighth graders to support incoming sixth graders, and in the high school model, we are using 11th and 12th graders to support incoming ninth graders. The PGC program really focuses on three areas of development for young people. We're looking at a healthy socio-emotional development. We are looking at leadership cultivation, and then we are looking at the reinforcement of student voice. To date, we have launched PGC in 23 high schools in Baltimore City and in five middle schools. We have consistently demonstrated the program's ability to increase attendance, decrease chronic absence, and increase on-time promotion. Slide six of the deck that I gave you sort of goes into a little more depth around the outcomes of the program. And we know that mentoring matters, and so I'm gonna start with Taylor from my right, who's a junior at Edmondson Westside, and she's gonna tell you how mentoring has mattered to her.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Taylor Shaw. I'm a 16-year-old junior at Edmondson Westside High School. And PGC has impacted my life academically because the roles that I hold in my high school and with academics is nice to know that younger people are looking up to me of what I do, and they can see, "Oh, I would like to follow in those footsteps to be on the academic track as me." And with my fellow PGC mentors, I mean, we, we're like at the top of the top when it comes to academics. And just somebody that's brand new into high school, high school is a, a big transition in four years of your life. So, it's either you play in the first year or you pay for it in your last year. So, if you, if you basically have somebody, a strong advocate, to guide you into the right way, I mean, you're making a big impact on somebody's life and you're changing somebody's life. And PGC also has impacted my life personally with getting, getting to know myself a little bit more and getting to know people inside and out. Because you never know what people go through outside of Edmondson or outside of anywhere that you go. And just to connect with different, just to connect with younger students on a more personal intimate level, it's really, it's a big life changer because if you're doing so many good things and you impact a young person's life, somebody that's about two years younger than you, you could be steering them on the right path of what they're not getting at home. So, I mean, being a big sister, a big brother is what we need right now in all circumstances as everything stands. And it's really flattering just to know that I could stay on, stay on top of somebody and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do as opposed of when I was in ninth grade. And my big sisters were the seniors on the volleyball team, and I saw them like mostly in practice or just transitioning to class, but somebody standing on top of my grades and everything is really a, is really a humbling feeling. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Stovall. I'm a 10th grader at Frederick Douglass High School. I'm 16 years old and, thank you. And PGC has affected my life tremendously because in ninth grade, I was stupid. I didn't know, I was fresh. I was right out of eighth grade. I was, you know, I was doing everything I possibly could, skipping class, you know, leaving school early, doing what I wanted to do. But this program, it helped me. It, it set me on the right path because it showed me that, it showed me that if you don't do what you gotta do in the beginning, you're gonna have to pay for it in the end, like Taylor said. You gotta basically put the effort in beforehand so you don't have to keep working as you get older. And this program really did help me. The 12th graders showing me the do's and don'ts in order to, you know, succeed through high school. You know, at Frederick Douglass, you know, they don't really pay everybody attention there, you know, because it's Douglas. It's not the best school. So, you know, so, you know, with the 12th graders helping us out, showing us what to do and what not to do, it's, it's just a, a great program to be in. And I just, I just thank every, thank everybody for helping me. I'll especially thank Mr. Cooper for being one of my mentors because he set me on a, on the right steady path because my, if I, if I would have continued without being in this program, I would be probably dead right now. I would be probably dead right now because I was always leaving school, but this program kept me in school and put me on the right path. And I'd just like to thank that.
So, I'm Mr. Cooper, the guy he just talked about. I wasn't expecting that. Thanks, man. Yeah, so I think Sean and Taylor did a very good job illustrating the power behind PGC. I come from a, a different perspective because I'm one of the PGC coordinators, so I have the ability to kind of see their growth in ways that they might not be able to see it just yet. So, one thing that the program really allows to happen is that the, the bridges that are, that are built between the, the ninth graders and the 11th and 12th graders are in many ways lifesavers, like they said, and they, they really serve to kind of create an element of accountability that a lot of the ninth graders may not have coming into high school without this, without the opportunity to build these type of connections with the, with the upperclassmen. So, there's definitely power in, power in that. It also gives the, the ninth grader something to look forward to as they enter their 11th and 12th grade year. As one of the coordinators, I have a lot of ninth graders now coming to me like, "Yo, Coop, can I be down next year?" "No, you gotta wait until at least your 11th grade year." But just the fact that something has impacted them that much that they're already at the end of their ninth grade year, ready to kind of take the reins and, and, and serve as the, the impact that, that impacted them as ninth graders and part of the PGC program, so.
So, thank you. So, as you can see, mentor absolutely matters, and I, I want to just highlight that. So, Sean was a ninth-grade participant of PGC, where we leverage the power of 11th and 12th graders to support him. And then during his 10th grade year, we attach adult-to-student model called Achievement Mentoring, so those young people that were in the ninth grade who need some additional support can get some additional support from an adult already in the school building. So, it's organic mentoring. And then next year, Sean will be a peer leader himself. And so, we're, we're pushing and we're impacting the lives of young people and the adults.
Okay, are there any questions on the board?
The, I'm curious to hear how the program works during the school day, or is a lot of the mentoring happening after school? Does it happen both? What does the actual program look, look like day-to-day?
So, that's a, that's a great.
And how mu, I'm sorry, and how, are the students been taken out of class for anything? Maybe, I'm curious.
It's a great question. So, it is a school-based initiative, and the Peer Group Leadership Class becomes a class on the school's master schedule. So, a peer leader like Taylor goes to her leadership class four days a week where she is taught by two staff members of the school how to be a peer leader and a group facilitator. The actual mentoring happens in teams. So, Taylor and another 11th and/or 12th grader is paired in teams, and they are assigned to 10 to 14 ninth graders that they work with throughout the entire school year. So, the leadership class happens daily, four days a week, and then at least one day a week, the older students push into the classroom where their ninth-grade students are, and they are working on whatever that lesson is for the week. Let's just say it's safety and social media, it's navigating peer leadership. And, and the students in high school, the older students in high school, it is a course for credit, so they get an elective credit, and they get service hours towards graduation. And in middle school, they get service hours as well.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Thank you.
I'm glad you asked, did you have a question? I'm glad you asked the question because I, I didn't realize how systemic it was. You probably said it, but it didn't really sink in. Is there a certain teacher type of social studies, science, ELA that gravitates to playing these roles since it's in the school day? Or is it just anybody who's interested in doing it? Like, is there a generalization about who participates as teachers?
So, I hope that my, my honesty is appropriate, but the biggest, the most important profile of the two adults that take on this position is that they like and respect young people. The program at its core is really pushing on a belief that young people is, are not simply problem starters in the building, but they are key components to solving the problems in your building. They shift climate, they already have a vested authority, and they are shaping their peers, whether we give them permission or not. The Peer Group Connection Program just allows us to push into what those conversations that are going to be had are.
I think that was a great answer, actually. I mean, it honors the true intent of the people that are, that are participating. Anything else? Thank you very much.
So, thank you all and for, and Sean and Taylor for all your work in being peer leaders as well as engaging, but in leading your peers, which is one of the distinctives of this program. We would like to honor you this evening, so. reader of our proposed school police policy. It's accompanying regulation and revised general orders. Taken together, these items lay out a progressive and I would say healthy vision of a school police force that will ensure that students and staff have a safe, secure environment for teaching and learning without criminalizing our students. I really want to take this opportunity to thank our board liaison, Joe Strake, who invested a tremendous amount of time and effort in this process over the course of more than 18 months, as well as our very own school police chief, Akil Ham, who I have not given permission to retire for at least the next 20 years, and Ed Clark of the Maryland Center for School Safety, who has been a wonderful outside partner in this endeavor. I can say with confidence that this policy, as I talk to my colleagues across the country, those with school police forces, those without, that this policy represents one of the most forward-thinking stances on this issue of respect for student rights of any school district in the United States. Equally important, it is the result of an ongoing, genuine commitment to reach out and collaborate with student-led groups, teachers, the school community, the NAACP, school police, and advocates from the Coalition to Reform Student Discipline to ensure that we would benefit from the widest possible range of informed opinions. This policy is an outgrowth- This policy is an outgrowth and integral to our blueprint for success and its founding principle of student wholeness because that is its central premise, a commitment by the district to treat our students like whole people with the dignity, respect, and protections to which they are entitled. Under Chief Ham's leadership, our school police have already made enormous strides in this regard. Admittedly, we are not finished, but this policy advances that pro- process by making its underlying assumptions explicit and its overall intentions clear. I said earlier in an interview about this today, that this work around the policy, the work of our policy committee, um, alongside Commissioner Martha Hassan, um, really was the work of a broad range of people, um, and really is our policy catching up with the practice that has improved greatly under Chief Akil Ham's leadership. It successfully combines respect for the law and respect for the rights of those whom the law is meant to protect. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. We'd now like to do a, we'll do a review of the consent agenda to see which items people want to pull. Um, for those of you who have not been here before, um, many of these items have been discussed in, uh, public, open meetings in committees. Um, and so some of these won't be discussed because they've already been discussed and on a public viewing, public participation. Um, we'll come back later in the meeting to vote, um, and if any have been pulled, we'll do presentations. Um, let's see. Item 8.01, academic calendar for SY 1819. Item 18.02, policy GBI, employee participation in political activities. Item 8.03, policy J.J.L., student participation in political activities. Item 18, excuse me. Item 8.04, 2018 Comprehensive Educational Facilities Master Plan. Item 8.05, policy ECAE, school police, we are going to pull that for presentation. Item 8.06, 2018 charter school applications for opening SY 201920, we are going to pull that for presentation. Item 9.01, youth works. Item 10.01, skilled nursing services. Item 10.02, translation interpreter services. Item 10.03, therapeutic and non-therapeutic aid services. Item 10.04, special education, short-term substitutes. Item 10.05, University of Virginia. Item 10.06, strategic ed tech. 10.07, speech and language pathology services. 10.08, the achievement network. 10.09, workbench education, project-based learning. Item 10.010, extended learning services, Art with a Heart. 10.11, extended learning services, Baltimore Symphony Orchestra. 10.12, extended learning services, Leaders of Tomorrow Youth Center. 10.13, Baltimore School for the Arts Foundation. 10.14, Great Minds. We'll pull Great Minds. You want to say why? Bummer.
Yeah, I just want to follow up from my Teaching and Learning Committee questions around the breakdown of the, the procurement. It's a big one, over the years, uh, and what the money goes for and what's open source.
10 point, excuse me. 11.01, Acme Paper and Supply Company, American Pride Paper and Plastic LLC, Daxwell Distribution, FPC Holdings, General Merchandise Supplies Unlimited, and Interboro Packaging Company and Peppers, and Peppers Inc. This is to furnish and deliver sustainable and non-sustainable cafeteria products. Item 13.01, Walters Relocation Inc., RNA Movers Inc., and Apple Transfer. This is for school relocate, uh, hauling services for all city schools. 13.02, Colossal Contractors Inc., Arundel Builders and Construction LLC, JLN Construction Services LLC, and Roy Kirby &amp; Sons. 13.03, Colossal Contractors Inc. and CNN Associates LLC. There's gymnasium renovations. Item 13.04, John W. Bronner Contracting Company. Item 13.05, BMS Cat Inc., cleanup and restoration services after fire and water damage. Item 13.06, Cintas Corporation, purchase, rental, lease, and delivery service of employee uniforms. And finally, 15.01, NCS Pearson, for ongoing software maintenance and support. Okay, when we vote on consent, we're going to pull items 8.05, 8.06, and 10.14. Everything else will go by consent. Okay, good. Thank you. With that, we'll begin our public comment, um, from the specially recognized groups. We'll start with our, uh, friend from PCAB, Trish Garcia-Pilla. Is Trish in the room or is she upstairs? Up, there she is. Okay.
I'd like to just give a quick update. We, at PCAB, had our last public meeting of the school year last week on June 7th and we had a great conversation about the upcoming equity policy and we were joined by Commissioner McFadden. We were very grateful to have him present. And, uh, we did something really unique with Teachers Democracy Project and we circled up, um, which is a restorative practice, and we talked about the equity policy. And it was a really, really great meeting, um, with really great ideas that I'm sure Commissioner McFadden will be bringing to the table, um, especially on the 19th, uh, here in this room. Also, wanted to say, this is my last meeting as the chair of PCAB. I still have one more year, so I, I will still be around. I may sit at this table again and take the five minutes for PCAB. Hopefully, we'll be doing rounds, um, with, on the coming board. Um, so, may not be my last time here at this table talking to you. Plus, I have all your emails and you'll be hearing from me. And some of your cellphone numbers. Um, so, uh, well, to get on with, um, some of the things on the agenda, um, the stuff that wasn't pulled is stuff that we've talked about, uh, a long time ago. But I did want to point out two things. The first being that, uh, there's this report, the Comprehensive Educational Facilities Master Plan says a whole lot about our declining enrollment. And then the Enrollment Task Force, um, report also gave a lot about the enrollment, declining enrollment. You all sitting here know all of these things. And we know that the pie is really much too small for all the programs that we have. Um, and PCAB has heard so much over this past year from so many parents and so many community members. And the big question is, how can you all approve new programs, uh, which you will be doing or not doing? You'll be voting on tonight with the charter school applications. And this is charter parents and traditional parents. Well, we have to close schools while we don't have enough money for the programs that we have. And I'm just relaying the voice of the parents to you all from what we hear from them. And that is a big question on everybody's mind. Every time we get new charter applications and we have this every time, this time of year, that, that folks in the community really feel pressed and, and question how we can open new programs when we can't really afford the ones that we have. So I just hope that you all have that nugget of information in your heads when you're thinking about the, this vote tonight. And, um, finally, uh, there are also some questions about, and I'm switching pages around here, um, the school police policy. Everything that Dr. Santalisis said is so right on with the collaboration and the work and the effort that's been put into this and the time that it's taken, uh, has been such awesome, amazing work. Um, and we've worked with Joe and Joe's listened to PCAB as well. However, there are some issues that are still outstanding and I hope that they'll be considered and, and consider passably holding the vote. We have gone a third reader for other things and it might be important to do that here, um, especially in terms of a youth Miranda, adding a youth Miranda simplified version of the Miranda warning, um, including the definition and process for consent searches and there are search and seizure warrants, general orders 13 through 17, section H3, and create clear limits for use of force, especially with regard to use of force in response to children and teens. I hope that that will be considered. And thank you so much.
Thanks, Trish. It's been a pleasure.
Thanks.
Next, I'd like to invite our friend from the Teachers Union, from the BTU, Peggy Gladon. Is this Gladon? Oh, there she is. Hi. Oh, thank you so much. Taking care of me tonight. Thank you. Just coming apart at the seams here.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Santalisis and, uh, the Board, parents, community, partners, and students. You've heard my name is Peggy Gladon. I am a field representative for the Baltimore Teachers Union and I am here on behalf of President Marietta English, who could not join us tonight. President English's statement tonight is in response to the Board's plan to vote on both the school calendar and the school police policy. Tonight, BTU is asking the school board to delay their vote on the school calendar. The district is proposing to use two days within spring break as make-up days for inclement weather. This plan is in direct violation of Article 7.1B of the Baltimore Teachers Union's contract, which states, "There shall be two breaks during the school year, each of no less than five working days. One break shall be in the month of March or April or both. One break shall be in December." This means that the Board cannot break our contract by using days from the spring break to make up for days used for inclement weather. As a resort, as a result, BTU has already filed a grievance on the arbitration level to contest this vote. Next, the school police policy. The BTU supports school police and Chief Ham, whose hard work over his two-year tenure has afforded Baltimore City with the lowest school arrests record in the state. Regarding the new policy, we are in support of students who are dealing with aggressive behaviors, being referred to community mediation programs, and/or treatment at mental health and substance abuse in order to address the core issue behind their behavior, rather than automatically filtering them into the Department of Juvenal Services. We support the new policies that will teach officers how to interact with GLBTQ students, those with disabilities, and those for which English is a second language. We also support the development of a school police student advisory board, but we ask that a teacher and parent be a part of this board because their voices are vital in the process of developing safety policies. However, where this new police policies fall short is with the representation of victims of school assault. There is no clause within the plan that includes protections for policies for teachers, support staff, or students who are assaulted on school grounds. If the plan is to create a policy that is progressive and inclusive, then the policy must be included that addresses what will be done to assist victims of these assault. The BTU is asking that tonight's vote be suspended until a plan for our students, teachers, and school support staff, the victims of such assaults, be included. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gladon. Commissioner Cannon will get us started on public comment.
Okay, can we first have, um, Ms. Lynette Mike Mack? From Ames Church, please. Lynette and Mike Mack, did I get that right?
First of all. Excuse us. First of all, we'd like to say good evening and thank y'all for this opportunity. My name is Lynette Mack and I grew, I'm here on behalf of Ames Church. I grew up in the community of Sandtown as a kid and I moved back as an adult. And I would like to ask-
Can you all please stop the clock and start again? This lady's here, she's waited a very long time. You, you see children, they're restless, they have school tomorrow, they have jobs.
It's, it's fine. Yep, we got you. We got you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Why don't you start over, ma'am? Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. First of all, I'd like to say good evening and thank y'all for the opportunity of me and my daughter speaking at this time. I'm here on behalf of Ames Church and I grew up in the community of Sandtown as a kid and I moved back as an adult. And I was coming to ask if y'all would give us a chance to build a school in the community. My daughter has been accepted at a school and, um, it's far away from where we live at. She was accepted at the Maryland Design School. And I worry because she's 11 and she have to catch two buses from where we live. And I was asking and praying that y'all give our community a chance to build a school, to rebuild, and to bring the kids' hopes up, that our community is more than what people say it is. Thank you.
Um, I agree with my mother's say because I'm 11 and I can't catch buses by myself. Because some kids get snatched off the buses or while they trying to walk home, they get hurt. So I don't want to be one of those children because 26 kids in these months got snatched and killed. So I don't want to be one of those 26 kids. And I'm here to represent Ames Baptist Church. I was, I was hoping y'all would agree to build the school so that many ki- so many more, so that many more kids won't get hurt like the other 26. So I was hoping you could help my kids in the community and myself and my nieces and cousins to get a school built.
My name is Carolina.
My name is Carmen.
And my name is Edwin Perez. I'm one of the SOMOS co-advisors, and we're here tonight to speak about an issue that the SOMOS students have been working on with the commissioners. And I'd like to thank again Mr. Cannon for your service. Thank you so much. City forever.
SOMOS brought to the attention of North Avenue that the current high school acceptance process systematically excludes students based on their English language proficiency. Due to the current composite score system, the number of ESOL students in selective high schools is not representative of the number of ESOL students in the district. Oh, sorry. Instead, they're being pipelined into certain schools, overwhelming ESOL staff at those schools and denying gifted ESOL students the opportunity to participate in a more rigorous environment. According to our legal research, section seventeen oh three F of the Equal Education Opportunity Act requires school districts to take actions to overcome language barriers that impede English language learners from participating equally in state and district educational programs. We also consulted with the ACLU about the Equal Education Opportunity Act Title VI. They stated that, quote, "The way the eligibility criteria are set up seems to exclude EEL students because the criteria requires a master of the English language that bars anyone who hasn't mastered the language from attending, which gives fewer education opportunities for English language learner students than non-English language learners." The EEOA Title VI and the constitutional protection guarantees the students will not be discriminated against, based on the bias of their national origin. And as it stands, there are few, if any, EEL students who are able to enter schools in Baltimore that have entry requirements like City and Poly, end quote.
In March two thousand seventeen, North Avenue made a commitment to City Council Education Committee, and SOMOS said they would address this important issue by September of last year. After no changes were made, SOMOS began to meet with North Avenue and the City Council, as you can see on the timeline that we passed out. Unfortunately, this process has minimal feedback or not to the degree of our expectations. We've seen interest by North Avenue in combating injustice regarding the fair access for ESOL students to highly select the schools, but they seem to lack the urgency to solve this in a timely manner. In today's WIPR broadcast, Allison Perkins Cohen, BCPSS chief of staff, stated that this problem may not be solved till two years. This affects people's lives and students' futures. It keeps brilliant students like Sam Reed Sheera's eighth-grade valedictorian of Vanguard Middle School from attending City College, which is where she belongs. Therefore, these are our demands.
North Avenue needs to release the new scores of eighth-grade students and their new placements by Thursday, June fourteenth. They must mail and make personal phone calls to these students' families and their native language with clear information on how to enroll in their new school. They must commit to altering the composite score system to be equitable for current, rising eighth-grade ESOL students. They must complete the new composite score system by October twelve, two thousand eighteen. They must involve SOMOS in a meaningful way and frequently update SOMOS throughout the whole process, starting now.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Board?
Any questions from the Board? I know, Ms. Perkins Cohen, would you like to respond?
Yeah, that'd be great. So.
Okay. Oh, but I, sorry. Okay. I just wanted to.
So, thank you so much for coming in again. As you know, we've met with you guys a couple of times, and we've been really, really appreciative of the case-making that you've made, the, you know, these students, everybody should know the research they've done tonight. They've done incredible research on this issue. They brought an issue to our attention. They didn't just do the research about what the problem was, they they also came with very specific solutions about what to do about it. We first met with them, I believe, in February, I want to say, about the issue. And we talked about the fact that that is in the middle of a choice process. So we said we would consider the information they brought and that we would come back together to meet again to talk about solutions to that problem. So then we came back and talked about various solutions. So if you recall, we talked about a two-pronged approach. And so the YPR story, unfortunately, we had this conversation with the reporter yesterday as well, got the information wrong, which is that there's a two-pronged approach. So we talked about the fact that we need to decide what to do with this year's choice process for students in this year. And that's, we have to take one approach with that, because when you're in the middle of a choice process, you can't make wholesale changes to the choice process, because there are other students in that process who have already entered it with certain understanding of what the what the how the composite score is calculated, what the rules are for entrance and so on, and that we can't change it mid-process because it's not fair to all students. So that we had to look at one approach for this year and then a longer-term approach. When the article today talked about two years, that was in response to the longer term, which we had talked about extensively with that reporter. But the shorter-term approach, as we talked about, is still in process. And we recall, one of the concerns you flagged for us rightly was that one of the challenges for the public to understand with English language learners is that the composite score includes things like grades and includes things like test scores. And English language learners, when if they happen to be new to the school system or new to the country, at the time, the key time for when grades are calculated and and test scores are calculated for that composite score, seventh grade for high school is the really pivotal time, then their grades may very well not reflect their capacity as students or academic capacity, and their score test scores may not reflect it either. And so that was one of the things the students really pointed out to us, and they're right about that. And so what we committed as part of that conversation to them is that what we would do is that we would then do a few things. One is that we would ask English language, the teachers of English language learner students, to make recommendations to us about students who they feel like the composite scores didn't properly reflect their capacity because of that that issue. And two, that we would look for any students who had like blanks in their scores. So for one thing, a student who may be excused from taking the PARC test if their language ability isn't there yet, and so they might have a blank in that score. Or again, their grades may not reflect their capacity, because English language learners, again, in that immediate time when they're first learning English, may not be scoring at a level that reflects their capacity. But very quickly, these students then not just acquire English, but they the information shows that they then start outperforming our other students. So again, that, one, if they happen to immigrate to the country or be learning English at a time when those scores are really calculated, it's a huge disadvantage for them. So so the SOMOS students were absolutely right in pointing that out. And so what we said we would do, and what we are doing, is that we would then look at the scores for those students and then look at and look at the more recent, the most recent data for those students. So for the for, in the case of these students, we would be looking at the most recent, I think it's I-ready scores, Laura, Laura, the most recent I-ready scores, which happened at the end of the year, and the most recent grades, the final grades for those students, which haven't been calculated yet. So we have to wait for those scores to update their composite scores and then see if the revised composite scores with that new information would change their their eligibility for any entrance into these schools. And then we would notify those parents after that work is done to let them know if then their student, their new score would would make them eligible for entrance into school. So the reason that those students haven't heard yet is because the final grades aren't done yet. As I know as a parent myself, I haven't received the final grade yet, and I'm sure Mr. Perez can say they haven't calculated grades yet. And the I-ready scores have to be then normed and assessed by our Office of Achievement and Accountability before we can update those scores. So that's happening, and that's the one-prong of what's happening now. What I was talking about in the story about two years out is about the longer-term work about, so that's what we can do with the current process without really changing the current process. But then what you flagged is, are there things that we should be thinking about wholesale about how we do the entrance into to entrance criteria at high schools and other ways we should consider, like you had suggested a different process, like is there an interview we should consider? Are there other ways we should look at changing the process? And you had some specific recommendations about maybe a percentage increase for students who scores who were English language learners, like giving a percentage kind of a higher weight for certain scores because of that disadvantage. And we talked about the fact that as part of our longer-term review, which we're already conducting of our choice process, that we should then take some of those ideas and consider them as part of the process. So we have an outside consultant that we're using to advise that work from MIT, who's really advising all of our work on this. And we really thought it was an exciting idea, and I still think it's an exciting idea, that we will have the students kind of present to the committee that we already have their ideas and work with this MIT professor to kind of run their ideas, just like they do with our ideas. And we often have ideas, too, of how we're going to make something better. And then you run it through a model, you have to test it, and you run it through and you find out it didn't work quite like you thought, or has some perverse impact, or it's overestimating something, or it's underestimating something.
And where would that be? Because we would promise that we'd be involved in that.
Yes, and you will be. And that's what I'm saying, so you will be. So we're gonna, we're working on that's, those are kind of a longer, that's the longer-term process, remember? So the short short term is what's going to happen to students this year. The longer-term process is that we are going to schedule time for you to meet with the MIT professor so that you can do exactly what we talked about, that you can run your your ideas through, the MIT professor can run them through the model, and then you can see how they result. And then we can adjust it based on what we learn from that. So that is still what we're doing.
So Allison, what's happening this year? Is that your question, right? What's happening this year with the eighth-grade students, right?
Well, right now, we just, we know this is a time-sensitive issue, especially since most of us, summer is approaching, school is ending, and most of us have internships, jobs, and we're not going to be able to attend this issue as, we're not going to be able to prioritize this issue like we did during the school year. And so we just don't want what happened this year to happen again next year, that we don't have the time to fix these issues.
So so this year, again, the difference was that it was.
Maybe we should do, I just want you to all know that we're hearing you, that there's a short-term solution for this year that needs to get done, and we have taken some steps. And maybe we talk about that again with Ms. Ohanian and you outside.
They're in process right now. Like I just said, we're waiting for the final grades, and we're we're recalculating the scores using the final test results.
Do we have a final date or approximate date that we can let the, I don't want to say young people, excuse me, it's just that I'm old, that we that we can let the students know when they will have the new, the recalculation? I think, is that is that what, that sounds like what you're asking?
Yeah. Yeah. Laura, can you come answer that question about time?
It can be approximate, Laura. I just think that they they want to leave here with a range. So can we give them a range, just a target? Like around July first or around July fifteenth? Around July first, right? So what you all can do is, and again, and I fully appreciate the internships and all that, and by the way, I'm thrilled that you're doing things over the summer, so that's a good thing. But let's target July first, around there, give her, give a day or two. And if you don't hear, then what I would do is I would circle back again with Ms. Perkins Cohen. Does that, is that helpful, like actually having a date?
Yes.
Okay. I think Commissioner Frank first.
Just one request. It was hard to hear your testimonies. It seems like you you read it from written. Could you just submit it so that we can actually hear your full testimony?
Yeah, we're definitely submitting a copy.
Commissioner Song.
So I just want to clarify with Chief Perkins Cohen, because there's a lot of words there. Is there a possibility right now for rising freshmen, for teachers to advocate on their behalf? For a teacher?
Yes.
So so people who are applying to go to high school now, they're just wrapping up their eighth-grade year. I heard a lot of composite scores, but if they had a teacher advocating for them, saying, I see, I see this potential, is there a way, a mechanism for that to happen?
So we've already reached out to all the English, the teachers of English language learners, to ask them for their recommendations of students for whom they think the composite score does not accurately reflect their capacity, and so that we would then make sure we give them a second look through this process.
So but if a social studies teacher wanted to advocate on behalf, or a math teacher, would they have the ability to do that as well?
So, I mean, what we put in place was the English language learner teachers, because they're in, they know these students very well, so that's what we already did.
So each, each, yeah, that's that, that's, is that clear for you all that that what's going to get done this year? And you'll get back, they're going to recalibrate the grades, and each teacher, each English language, ELL teacher, I'm sorry, is going to review the child's record to see if they recommend anybody else for the for the citywide application process. So every child's records are going to be reviewed, and also the other pieces, we're going to make sure there's no blanks. Remember, you brought that up to us, there's going to be no blanks that are recorded. No zeros, basically. You brought that up to us as well. Yep.
So then I would simply say, if you have a math teacher that knows you really well, ask them to contact your ELL teacher. If you have a science teacher that knows you really well.
There are high school students. This is for people in eighth grade.
Correct, but eighth graders have math.
They're juniors at City.
Correct, but there's people out there who are applying to City and Poly who are looking for advocates. And if the only advocacy avenue is the ELL teacher, but you're someone who really wants to get into City or Poly and has a great relationship with your math teacher, with your ELA teacher, with your theater teacher, and they see your potential to succeed at these schools, the conduit is to reach out to the ELL teacher. And they're the ones that can report on about the student's potential, correct?
Yes, but I will just say that happened back in February or so, so that happened months ago. So we've already identified which which students we are the ones that we're particularly focusing on and that we're we're pulling the grades for and we're pulling the most recent test scores for. That's why that work is already in process, based on the feedback we already got, and anybody who has any blanks.
Okay. Thank you.
So who's advocating? The Board is advocating for these young people?
Yes. 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 The Board's been involved in the.
Why we changed the process.
The Board's been involved in these conversations.
Advocacy of the young people, based on their presentation there, based on coming tonight.
Exceptions will be made.
Yes.
Yes, we've already put that in.
Yes, the process is in place.
What they are pushing for, which they should be pushing for, is an actual date so that it is not floating out in space and that they can hold us accountable for that date. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, we're on it. We're on it.
Thank you, guys.
Nice job. Nice job.
Can I also just say one more? Can I also just say thank you all one more time for like the for the incredible case-making you all did, that I think it's a testament to your leadership at City College and and the leadership of your 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 teachers. And you guys just did a great job making a case for us. And it was such an amazing case that it was part of my speech when I did the commencement at City College on on Saturday, because I was so impressed with the work you all have done.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I would like to welcome our next guest. I might get the last name wrong. Beverly, is it Reed or Real? Reed, I thought so, and I just couldn't see the last letter.
Good afternoon, Board members.
Hi.
And the lovely Dr. Santa Lysus. I just had some concerns. I worked for Baltimore City Public School for forty-nine years as a secretary, and I just retired in sixteen. So I was concerned when my great nieces and nephews' parents came to me. And I just wanted some clarification on the procedures. One procedure I wanted to know about is a child that doesn't have their uniform or they sent home. And the next one I wanted to was the replacement of the bus tickets. I understand they've been paying five dollars for them. Another incident, I filed four heat messages in May, and I called for help, and I got confusion because I couldn't get a definite answer from nobody as to procedures that were supposed to be followed. Now, last week, my nephew went on a trip, and when I was in school, they had, Baltimore City had their own trip procedure, application that they had to put in. It's on the website, and that's what you fill out and you give it. It goes through various cycles before it actually gets approved back to the administrator. And the thing that took me was on the permission slip, it had on there that the students that take medication are responsible for their medication and making sure they take them. And I didn't think Baltimore City ever, I've been in there for forty-nine years, and when they had a trip, they always asked a person to take the medication with them, and adult was responsible to make sure if anything happens. And waiting for them to go on the trip, I noticed that one of the buses. week, my nephew went on a trip. And when I was in school, they had, Baltimore City had their own trip procedure, um, um, application that they had to put in. It's on the website, and that's what you fill out, and you give it, it goes through various cycles before it actually gets approved back to the administrator. And the thing that took me was on the permission slip, it had on there that the students that take medication are responsible for their medication and making sure they take them. And I, I didn't think Baltimore City ever, I, I've been in there for 49 years, and when they had a trip, they always asked a person to take the medication with them, and adult was responsible to make sure if anything happens. And waiting for them to go on the trip, I noticed that one of the buses was in an accident. And I went up to the assistant principal, and I said that, "We can't drive those children in the bus, because that bus had an accident," thinking about the, you know, children, mm, let's save the other children. And he said it was too late. Another thing was, what is the procedures for faculty members taking children in their cars? And, I mean, I can't get no answer. I mean, I'm worried about anything that happens to my brothers' and sisters' children in my blood. So these are just some concerns that I'd like for the board to tell me the preci, preci, I know what the procedures are, but I just want you to be clarified, because I went for help and got confused.
No, I can really appreciate that. I can honestly say that those are very sort of deep operational details, that the board doesn't always know the answer to those questions, but I would appreciate knowing the answers to those questions. So I, I don't know that it's best to sort of tick through them here. Is it poss, who, Allison, who's the, I wanna make-
It's in the board's thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we should, no, I'm not saying that we, we shouldn't know, but I can honestly say some of those, we just don't know the answer to.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're right. Some we do, some we don't. But you had a lot of, I just whispered over here, those are a lot of really good questions, and you deserve to get answers.
Yeah, well, see, I looked on the document on the eve, each time there was an incident. And there's a, it tells you exactly what will happen if the child doesn't have the uniform, then they can't be sent home, they can't lose the instructions. That's in there on my text. That's-
Yeah, that would be one I would say that I, that I knew. Some of the other ones I don't. So what I'm wondering is if, do you have a, you had this written down, do you have a list of those questions?
Yes, and I also have a picture of the, the bus that was in the-
Christian.
I'm glad you're still, you are still attending to detail, Ms. Reed.
Oh, yes. I was the best secretary in Baltimore.
I know that's right. I know that's right.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed, I wanna make sure that Christian gets the, the questions. We'll make sure you get answers, but I also want, Christian, I want the board to see all the questions and all the documented answers, so that we can be more educated ourselves on some of this stuff. And Ms. Reed, we have a question here from a board member, before you leave?
Just a comment, Ms. Reed. I, I can't speak to the substance of the list, and I know that the, the staff will, will be sure that they do that. I'm actually more concerned about the fact that you may have asked these questions in the past, that you called and asked for responses, that you didn't get responses, the heat tickets weren't responded to. So to me, that is as important as you getting the substance of the answers too. So I hope that we can look into that as well.
Okay, now, the heat tickets were answered to, but not as far as Baltimore City Public School rules and regulations that I perceived, you understand? So that's why I'm calling you for help. I've been getting confusion, because on the Baltimore City, you know, you can text the stuff, I mean, look at it, and you can see what the preci, you can ask, what's the procedures for the dress code, and who gets sent home, and what, that's on there.
Okay.
So, you know, I got the numbers and everything, just like I'm getting 35.
That's probably, thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you so much. Our next guest is Dr. Cecil Gray.
There it is.
Yeah! Signs up, signs up!
Yes, say yes, we'll do the rest.
Yes, say yes, we'll do the rest.
Yes, say yes, we'll do the rest.
All right, that's cool. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Good evening, CEO, Dr. Santa Lissis, Board Chair, Ms. Cassiani, and, and other board members. As always, we appreciate the opportunity to share, and our concern is, we're here tonight asking you to please vote yes for the public charter school, the Freedom and Democracy Public Charter School in Sandtown. Again, if you, I, I'm guessing by now, some of you, if not all of you, should have received, I'm hoping that you did, a timeline. We've been working on this since 2016. Before anything came about closing Pender Hughes, we were already working on this. We're, we're in the original groups of charter schools. There were five charter schools when charter schools started in this city. This month makes 14 years. We're in that original group. We're still here, we're still doing the work. And we do not understand the way we're treated. We don't understand it. Don't know, we don't understand the way we're treated as an organization, and we don't understand how the people of Sandtown are being treated. And I, I don't know any other way to do it, except in these, these few moments that you give. We, we've had one meeting with the CEO since 2016 August. She shared, back on May the 8th, she referenced that we had met recently. We, we did, that's the truth. Prior to that, the last time we met with the CEO was August 2016. We had numerous meetings with Ms. Perkins Cohen, and they're very strange meetings. There's a lot of documentation here that we'd like for your attorneys and our attorneys to look at. I was, I was cited as having defamation of character. It's here. We never got a response. We asked for a meeting, our board asked for a meeting, nobody met. You can't attack me and put your signature on it and not meet. If you're gonna accuse me of this, 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 and this, prove it. But you couldn't prove it, because it's a lie. The police, school police records, they contradict the defamation of character. So if you target me and you target the people, what are we, what's, what's left for us to do? What's left for us to do? And I, and I really appreciate, I'm gonna stop my time, because I wanna share some of my time with you all to get a response. You don't engage us. You've just spent, hey, let me say this, the, the, the young people who are here, we absolutely agree, because the city of Baltimore schools is, is in violation of the English language, English language learners' protocol, violation. There is a, you're out of order federally. We already know that, we, we support them, just as we supported the people of Sandtown in December, when it was said that they're gonna close Pender Hughes. We always support, whatever's right, we support. And somebody said that, that our application had some weaknesses relative to special ed, you better go check the federal government. They got the exact thing, the exact same application you have, they have. We gotta check satisfactory in special ed. So if that's, if that's part of what you wanna talk about, you're lying. You're lying. Have you read the application? Have you read the federal government application? We are not out of order on special ed. A few years ago, you said the NACA 2 was out of order on special ed. The city of Baltimore said that. And then we produced for you a document from MSD that said special ed. Fine, satisfactory. So there are so many inconsistencies. There's, I'll stop, but please engage us.
It's the black school.
Engage us. Freedom and democracy. Freedom and democracy. The, the, the neighborhood where Freddie Gray comes from.
Yeah.
You, you gonna make these people wait another year? They gotta wait another year while you study something? Charter schools were created because their traditional schools weren't working. And now we're hearing, no charter school, no traditional school, something else. What kind of school? So you're, you're just gonna put a block on a charter school that the federal government has said yet, yes to?
Is it not?
What, what is, somebody explain that to us, please. Just, just give the people in this, in this room, from Sandtown and all the other folks in this room who are logical, give us the rationale. Give us the rationale. It's, it's inexcusable, it's unacceptable, it's unjustifiable, it's intellectually indefensible, it is morally and ethically wrong. What are you doing? I sound like, what's her name, Ms. Ebony? Ms. Ebony must be channeling through me. I sound like Ms. Ebony. What is it? What is it? It, it has nothing to do with our skills. We're more skilled than most of the people in this place. We have the credentials, we've got all of that. We've got the track record, so what's the problem? And if somebody say, well, if somebody said, well, well, Dr. Gray, they don't like you, that, look, that's for third grade, that's for the sandbox. We're grown folks, we gotta look out for children. We're here to look out for the children, adults and families of Sandtown. Grown folks got to do the right thing. Am I right about that?
Thanks, Doctor.
Please, please, give us, give us some questions, please.
You ran out of time, sir.
No, 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 you, 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 you had millions of questions for all of these old people.
Dr. Gray, Dr. Gray.
Did you hear me?
Dr. Gray.
Did you hear me?
I sure did, sir. No, 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 sir. Wait, you went on for two minutes over your time.
Yes.
The board chair had allowed you to do that.
I appreciate it.
I told you before, and I will tell you again, I will meet with you, you cannot send letters requesting meetings outside of what is an established process. You can document meetings, we can document them as well. You said you were gonna leave time in your public comments, you didn't, you went over the time. If you want a meeting, not one where you wanna circumvent the charter process, then we can do that. And we have, and, and we have, absolutely. And I am in-
Fifteen minutes of questions.
She, she took, very good, sir. And you know what? I will defer to the board process. You call a process. We have a process. We have a process. We have a process.
So engage us.
And I will assert it.
Engage us.
And I will assert the process.
Engage us.
Thank you.
Engage us.
This is not-
No, no, you, you have not.
This is not, this is-
And we don't do the right thing, we're gonna sue you. Name you and sue you, Ms. Stan.
Sit down, just sit down, just sit down for a minute. Sit down, sit down.
So at this point, we are-
Reboot her!
Miss Stan, you know, we got three doctors, Miss Stan. How dare you insult us?
So at this point, Dr. Gray, we are gonna, we are gonna, we are gonna follow the process that's established. We've, we, we, yes, we-
The school process of Dr. Santa Lissis?
We have, we have, it is not true that we haven't reviewed this. We did not respond, we were not able to take those meetings, because there, that, once the process has started, we have to treat every school the same, and we did that.
And the two, the two, the two years in between? And, and the charter advisory board, they have, they have a role, correct?
Yes, they did have a role.
The charter advisory board, on, on, on the website, it shows 20 members. We met with six people. One of those six was not a charter advisory board member. So they, they can cast an analysis with only five of their 20 membership present? That's not fi, that's not fair.
It's a more complex process than every-
We understand, we understand that, but, but that's not, that's not a quorum. Five out of 20, that's not right.
It's an advisory group. It, it, excuse me, we're gonna actually, we, we are actually gonna follow the process. We appreciate that you signed up for public comment. Again, you have been heard. We're gonna follow the process as we laid it out tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. So, are we gonna get a meeting?
Our next guest is Principal Chris Pataglia.
Thanks. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the board, and, and thank our school police for everything they do in our schools. A lot of times, we wait until a tragedy happens, such as a school shooting, before we start to pay attention to the job that school police are asked to do. And I just wanted to just take a minute and recognize that it's not all about school police having to arrest children. That is actually the furthest thing from what my experience has ever been with the school police. In our school, we have a positive environment, and the, the importance of having school police build relationships with kids or young people in an environment which is not contentious is extremely important when how to build those relationships going down the line. So I wanted to commend Chief Hamm, my own officer, Officer Davis, Officer Woods, and Sergeant Deah, because the way they work with our children is magical to watch. It's a special set of skills that school police have, that, I can't speak to police in general, but I can speak to the school police that I work with. And I consider them members of our school, and much like I had served on the test force committee for customer service, and we talked often about how it's more about relationships than anything else. And I can say that I've witnessed firsthand the, the power of school police building relationships. And when we continue to move forward with policies that you're gonna review, I, I hope that we can focus on the fact that school police protect our children and staff from outside people, from outside adults who want to come and, and necessarily not do good things in our schools. And, and I just wanted to make sure that we, we keep that in mind, and not just about policies that restrict what our police do, but also broaden some of the things they can do, so they can protect all of our young people and our staff. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Principal Pataglia? Thank you. Our next guest is Rod Hudson.
Signs up, signs up, signs up, y'all. Signs up. Do justice, do the right thing. Let our people go. Stop waiting. Free Sandtown now. Vote yes.
First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for the opportunity to come and speak before you today. I'd like to thank the school board for the opportunity to come and speak before you today. The people that you see here are representative of our community, which are composed of a lot of hard-working people who love their children and love their community. My purpose for being here is just to, to get an education, an educational opportunity that we think might be good for our community through the Freedom and Democracy School. We believe that, that it can work. And no matter what the past has been, we want to go to a future. We want to bridge a gap, so that we can have a quality educational system that will benefit these ladies and gentlemen behind me. This is not about me. This is not about Dr. Gray, but it's about the people of Sandtown who want and need it. From a spiritual and theological component, we believe that spiritually, we have an obligation to voice, to be the voice of those who may feel that they have no voice. And we know that you're listening. I know that you're listening, and you listen all the time. And I know that you've made strides to, to improve the relationship in our community. And the only thing we're asking today is for that relationship to continue to exist, and that the people of Sandtown will have the Freedom and Democracy School to come and operate it. I want you, if, if you have personal biases or feelings, whatever that might be, I, I would like for you to put that aside. And I would like for you to see these children here. Many of them I've known since they were five, four years old. In fact, we had a murder, two young men who were part of my basketball team when I was the basketball coach at Pender Hughes. Both of those young men were murdered a week ago. The next young man will be having his funeral tomorrow in our church. So this is a life and death issue. And I want you to think about it in those terms. That charter application, it means something. It represents something. And so I, I would just ask and compel you to think about it in those terms of us working together to bridge the have and the have-nots, so that we can all, that young man you saw here speaking, that young man has benefited, benefited from Sandtown community, and Popular Grove, and those areas. Frederick Douglass is a part of our community. And we want to continue that rich heritage. And we think that that can happen with a yes vote from you today. So I just only ask that if, if there are any animosities, if there's hurt feelings, if you could put that aside, and see the big picture of how we can change a generation. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask the people from Sandtown who came out today to stand?
Yes, sir.
Just acknowledge that. Would you all please stand?
Yes, sir. Keisha, please. Let's go. Let's go.
You're fun. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here once again. I'm here to speak about assessments. Since it seems to be that I am an assessment committee of one, here's my 2018-2019 first reader assessment proposal for traditional and public charter schools. The Education Commission of the States, which you have, looks like this. Interprets every student succeed act. It has specific descriptions about summative assessments. Similarly, MSDE has a description of sem, of formative and summative assessments. That's in your packet as well. And it's next to the last page, it looks like this. This is in part due to many states and districts exceeding the minimum federal testing requirement of 2% by mand, by mandating, for example, social studies and college and career readiness assessments. Other examples of summative overtesting are I Ready, ANET, PARC, NAEP, MISA, and also teacher assessments, et cetera, and the yearly subject PARC assessments for high school students. The current state assessment limits mandated testing to 2.2% of the school year for K through 7, and in 8th grade, it has a assessment limit of 2.3%. My proposal measures the same information and upholds the testing limits mandated in the More Learning Less Testing Act. According to ECS, pre-kindergarten does not have a mandated testing. I propose the district, I propose for the district to eliminate SKBs, benchmarks, math assessments, et cetera, and for teachers to create their own assessments for pre-K. Similarly, kindergarten has one ESA assessment, that's for every student succeed act requirement, which is the entrance and ready assessment exam. I propose administering only the kindergarten ready exam and have, also have a one summative assessment on reading and math at the end of the year.
Hey, Keisha, since you've got a lot here and you've only got about 30 seconds, do you wanna... Is there something, I mean, 'cause I...
Well, my, my point is...
We do read all your information, just for what it's worth.
Yes, my point is, is that there's a comprehensive list of assessments here, and it's over the requirement mandated limitations for each grade level. And so because the committee for assessments haven't met all year, and I have been asking since November, and then I received a letter saying that I was actually on the assessment committee, and it's actually mandated for it to start meeting in January, I decided to come up with my own proposal...
Okay.
For a first reader, and to submit it since I seem to be a committee of one on this assessment committee.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
And I also would like for this to be included in the family handbook and calendar, because this multi-page assessment comprehensive is only on the website, and it's hard to find.
Yes, we'll take, we'll, we'll take a close look at it, but somebody will have to determine if it's appropriate to include in there. I'd, I have to take a look at it before we can comment on that. Dr. Santalisa?
Just one question, Ms. Goodwin. Is this your compilation, or is this something...
Which one?
I'm sorry, the chart, the table for 2017-18?
Oh, this was on a website. I printed it on the website.
Okay, so you pulled this, that's why I just wanted to make sure. So this is, you pulled this down from our information, this is what's existing?
Yes, I was...
And this is what you're submitting for, for review?
No, yes, I'm submitting it for review, and I will submit my proposal in writing.
And this is your proposal? The timeline one?
No.
Oh, this is almost, you're gonna submit...
You're gonna submit that?
Yeah, this is my first...
That's what I was misunderstanding. I thought this was your proposal, now I'm seeing that's...
No, I was actually, I wanted to make sure that everybody had the documentation to read on their own about assessments from ESSA, and also what Baltimore City has, and also have a copy of what MSDE describes for assessments.
And then you'll just forward, you're gonna forward your proposal to the board? Is that what you said?
Yes, for first reading, yes.
Very helpful.
And on the back, I have a copy of my receipt, 'cause I had to print color copies from Staples, front and back.
I'm sorry, what do you want us to do with that?
I mean, we didn't meet. I could've had, I could've asked for the, I could've got these copies made here, but because we never met, I had to pay for color copies.
Duly noted.
Got it.
Duly noted.
Okay.
We got it.
I thought maybe that was a mistake, so I'm actually glad to know that that wasn't a mistake.
No. Oh, so when I hear from somebody, because I haven't heard from anyone since they said I was actually on the committee, we never met and never heard again from anyone.
Sean?
Good evening. So yeah, we do have an assessment team. We are working on and hopefully getting close to getting the 1819 assessment calendar to Dr. Santalisa's, but the committee that you're talking about is a little bit different. That's involving our partners within the BTU, or Baltimore Teachers Union. So we have two different things going on, and that's looking at things go out further. So I, you're right, we did email you, you are a part of that team. That team has not met, but that does not mean that we have not been working internally with our school's office, various partners within the district, looking at the 1819, looking at our current calendar, seat time, as you're saying, looking, getting feedback from school leaders as well as teachers, our ILEDs, for next year's calendar.
So when will I hear something?
With regards to the assessment that you're talking about, with regards to policy in the BTU, we will be back in touch with you very shortly. That team has not met in a couple of months, a few months, yes.
So they have had a meeting?
Let me and Chief Jones, we've met initially with Ms. English and Ms. Johnson, and we still have to work out some details of how that team will function, who will sit on that team, what parents, what teachers, things like that, that we just have to collaborate on. And it just hasn't happened yet. That piece hasn't, but it doesn't mean work around our assessment has not been taken place.
If you could just give her a timeframe, I think that would...
We will get back to you...
And a timeline, because when, when is the assessment...
Me and Chief Jones will get back to you by the end of this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keisha. Our next guest is Kim Humphrey.
Hello. Chair Kashani, Dr. Santalisi, and members of the commission, or commissioners, thank you. I want to first acknowledge some of our partners that are in the room too. I have two here, Shamala and Amanda.
And then we have some in the back that are here that have been working with us from the NAACP. And I do want, I am commenting on the school police policy. My name is Kim Humphrey. I am Legislative Council for Education for the ACLU, and I want to echo some of the comments that were made earlier. This is a very forward-thinking policy, and it has been a collaborative process. I want to emphasize that collaboration is not just sitting at the table, but actually, you know, coming to agreement on some things. And so although we have had collaboration, we agree with a lot of the ideals that are outlined in the policy, we do think that we have a bit more work to do as far as getting this right. So in addition to the comments that I'll make, we do want to emphasize and support the letter from the Coalition to Reform School Discipline, and we are asking that the board not vote on this policy tonight. And I just want to say that we really have to get this right. Baltimore City, with the leadership of Chief Hamm, has been doing a phenomenal job. I want to emphasize this. We are policing our students in a different way than other districts, and that is a good thing. Our policy needs to reflect those practices and needs to actually provide guidance. Right now, we are on our way, but we are not where we need to be. So I am going to leave a little bit of time for my colleagues, but I do have a few questions...
Yes, because we do, we do, we're gonna, I am gonna adhere to the time. So you've got, for the three of you, you've got a minute.
But you're taking some of my time right now.
All right, so you can have 20 more seconds.
So, does the policy respond to the range of questions and issues that emerge on a daily basis? And is it accessible? Is it an accessible resource? At this moment, it's not.
We don't have a lot of time, so I just want to reemphasize that the reason why I'm at this table is because I taught at Reach Partnership when the video went viral of Officer Spence. So we are not at this table voluntarily. I know that population very well, as well as others. I'm also a resident of Baltimore City, and I myself had to pull my child out of Baltimore City Public Schools because of issues with climate and culture and poor academic performance. So I'm not here only as an advocate, as a part of my job. I'm here also as a concerned citizen of Baltimore City. You had a, you had a presentation on enrollment and parents and engagement and how we need to get enrollment up. Well, this is a start. This, this school police policy needs to take into consideration how we police youth in Baltimore at large, and it needs to be in tandem with how we look at all of our youth around Baltimore City. And I'm afraid we did not...
Thank you.
We did not engage enough members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that you took the time, both the collaborative that you came tonight. Thank you.
So I do have comments in writing for everyone.
If you can share them with Christian. Thanks a lot, Kim. Yes. Next guest is Dexter Harris.
Good evening, board members, Madam Chair, Madam CEO, and all the distinguished board members. Tonight, I would like to introduce Dr. Dexter Harris, who has something to say about our application for Baltimore International Academy West.
Good afternoon. My name is Dexter Harris, and I'm with, come here as support of BIA because I left them out 10 years ago, and they came to my church, and they wanted to implement charter school there, but at the time, some of my staff did, did not believe it was gonna work. I'm sorry. I thought I couldn't, y'all couldn't hear me. I have a big mouth, so you can hear me now. I'm sorry. Good afternoon, my name is Dexter Harris, and I'm with the West Hills Boys and Girls Club, and I'm here as support of BIA Charter School. And the reason I'm in support of this school, because 10 years ago, they came to my church asking for room, and my board didn't think they was gonna make it, but we was very shocked because we found out they was one of the best charter schools in the city. And due to that, I want to give my support and ask for the city to consider funding them to start a charter school in southwest Baltimore. At the present time, I work with four different schools in Balt, my, four different schools, Frederick Elementary School, Thomas Jefferson, North Bend, and Sarah and Roach. And I realize that all those schools definitely need some improvement. And I, what I saw from her, saw from her curriculum and her, her kids was that they are well-advanced, and I would definitely, definitely want to, want y'all to consider having this school in southwest Baltimore.
Thank you. Question? Mr. Canham?
From, thank you so much for coming out and supporting the application. My question is, where, where are you gonna recruit the students?
Repeat that again?
The students. Where do you think you'll be able to recruit the students? The school wants to grow to 1,000. And you know, we don't want it to pull from one of our other schools. Are there other students that you feel like are craving this type of education, an immersion? It's very specific. It's an immersion program. And are, can you just talk a little bit more? Are people from the community asking for this? Are they demand, are they, are they...
Yes, they are.
And where do the students come from?
Yes, they are, and I will tell you that we will have more than a couple hundred kids in the school, 'cause I have a more than a hundred, a hundred couple kids in my program already. And the parents are very, very excited about a school coming like this to our community. And I think they would do great there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's, that's, thank you.
Graceland Paget? Grace Anne, I'm sorry. Grace Anne, I'm sorry. Great.
So I'm the parent. I'm the parent that you talked about earlier, that you want to reach out to for customer service, and I'm the parent that's gonna be pulling my child from your Baltimore City school, because my school, not necessarily the city as a whole, because there's a lot of great things that go on here, is failing my child. Okay? So she has a 504 that has not been followed in two years, and I have fought, and I have emailed, okay? And where's Dr. Brooks? I'm sorry. Let me tell you about this lady. Finally, my email fell on her, and she called me at 7:45 at night and heard my cries for my child. She called me at 7:15 this morning so I could have clear information about how to attend this meeting. Your system is broken for parents to communicate with you, to find out who's there. My child has emailed, was contacted by PJ Victoria, who's part of charter schools. She emails her, she never emails her back. The only person in your system who has been consistent is Dr. Brooks, and she has fought next to me. I've sat at a 504 table with a 504 chair IEP person banging their hands at Ms. Stewart Bay, saying that homeschool communication isn't a thing. Why is your officials that are supposed to be there fighting for my child getting disrespected? Can you imagine what they're doing to me as a parent? I can't seem to find anybody because their administration is failing. They're failing my kids. These people are supposed to have their PhDs, right? This is Bard High School Early College. What a great idea to bring to our city. And I'm a co-founder of City Neighbors, the original. Great follow-up to City Neighbors, right? I'm an active parent. I've been here. I've pushed for charter law. I pushed for these kids. I get to this school, and their leadership there is not what it promised you, because it's not inclusive of the '08 kids. It's not inclusive of the others. It's, it's heartbreaking. So what I beg you for is first some information. Who do I go to? Because you don't have voicemail, your email links are half the time broken. Who do you, who do you come to? How do I get answers as a parent?
Well, I can say as a board that what you just described is unacceptable. I don't, I don't have information about what, what it would take to get everybody functioning voicemail. I can honestly say that we've...
Help.
Yeah, no, I can hear you, so I'm gonna, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna let, ask Commissioner Berkeley to ask her a question, and I'm gonna ask Chief of Staff Perkins Cohen to respond, because what you just described is absolutely unacceptable. Commissioner Berkeley?
I may not have been listening carefully enough, but are you talking about Bard?
Yes, Bard High School Early College, just a minute.
Thank you.
Chief Perkins Cohen?
So thank you so much for coming in, and I'm really sorry, I'm truly sorry about the frustration that you've had in terms of trying to get help. So Angela Alvarez is right there, oversees the Office of New Initiatives, so she'll connect with you now to try to figure out how to follow up to your response. But thank you so much for bringing it to our attention, and I'm sorry it got to the point that you had to come here. And, and we appreciate the feedback on generally how hard it is to reach people at North Avenue and follow up, and, and we are aware of it and looking at how to try to fix it. and follow up, and we are aware of it and looking at how to try to fix it.
And again, this woman needs to be recognized, right? I was literally at the next step of an attorney, and she has countless and spent hours and listened to hear what I was saying and need to identify what's wrong. So definitely, I mean, what it gives to our seventy-two percent.
Thank you.
Trying to find the person. Yes.
For over a hundred hours.
No.
And five of us still have been wanting to.
You've been heard.
All right, thank you.
Allison, can you make sure this gets followed up on?
Yeah.
Thank you. Last, but certainly not least, Sarah Hemminger. Is Sarah still here? Oh, there she, I'm sorry. I thought I saw you over there, and now you're over here.
All those years of school for nothing. Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me a few moments to share with you. My name is Sarah Hemminger. I am the co-founder and CEO of an organization called Thread. I think, you know, a lot of our city right now is clearly quite divided, divided across all costs, types of lines, race, class, religion, and the impact of this social isolation is attacking at our core, our most basic human needs. So it actually, there's lots of studies that show, for example, social isolation is worse than smoking 15 cigarettes a day or being an alcoholic. And we also know that it has dramatic impacts on the young people in our city schools. So Thread works to mend this divide by building relationships across these lines of difference. We do it specifically because we know that our students in Thread are exceptional individuals, but they are often in extraordinary situations. So what do we actually do? We enroll high school freshmen who rank in the bottom 25% of their class. They stay in Thread for 10 full years, the remainder of high school, six years after high school, and during that time, there's a group of up to four volunteers who partner in collaboration with their family in the school to do everything that you would do for your own child, from pack their lunch, give them rides to school, help them with their homework. And during that time, what we've seen is radical success. We've been around now for 14 years. If you look at students in Baltimore City's public schools with GPAs during their freshman year of less than 1.0, only 6% graduate in four years. In Thread, it's 65%, and if you extend that out to five years, 87% of our students graduate from high school. When looking at our alumni, those who have finished all 10 years, 83% have a two- or four-year college degree or certification. So what we did about a year ago was we set a path to get to scale. The scale we actually want to get to is enrolling 7% of every freshman class each year across the entire district, the most academically underperforming 7%. To do so, we need to enroll 304 freshmen every year. Last year, we were at three high school sites, Douglas, Dunbar, and ACE, enrolling 48 students a year. We set out an ambitious four-year plan that would get us from enrolling 48 students to 304 each year by 2021. This year, we made huge strides. We launched a fourth site at Digital Harbor High School. Again, to give some context, our cohort of students that we enrolled this year was 112, so almost three times what we've previously enrolled in the total enrollment that we had in our first decade. The average GPA of our 112 students was .77, and at Digital Harbor High School, it was specifically .45. During this year, we've seen incredible success at this site.
Sarah?
Sorry.
No, no, if you could just wrap up.
Sure.
You're right in the middle of a thought. I want to let you wrap up.
No, I was just gonna say, we appreciate the support of the principals at all four schools and the district in that we've not only been able to enroll the 112 students, but over 500 volunteers, new volunteers to our organization. We're continuing to work towards scale. We plan to enroll 160 students this coming year and expand to additional high schools. What's important about our progress this year on a qualitative aspect is that 57% of the volunteers at Dunbar live in Federal Hill. So we've gone from being an organization that primarily works with volunteers that are university students to really engaging the broader community, both in the neighborhoods that our students attend school, the university communities nearby, as well as the corporate and religious communities. Thank you. Sorry I went over.
Again, it's not a question, but you started telling some very compelling numbers in terms of GPA. Could you just submit maybe to the board, unless it's on your website, the outcomes that we're, you're seeing, so that we can get a complete picture? Sorry you didn't have more time to present.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I couldn't have been more concise. I have a full copy of our strategic plan for the board and then an update that has all of the outcomes from this year, both in terms of student performance as well as our growth metrics.
Thanks, Sarah, and thanks for your efforts to go to scale on addressing some of the, some students that have the most challenges and with your, for your great outcomes. We can't thank you enough. That concludes our public comment. Given the public comment, I'd like to ask if there are any additional items that the board would like to pull from the Consent Agenda. With that, I'd like to have a vote on all the Consent Agenda items that...
I do need to pull one. I'm sorry, I just thought of a conflict, art with a heart.
Yeah, that's fair. So we're, in addition to, so we're gonna pull 8.05, 8.06. We're now also pulling 10.10 and 10.14. Can I have a motion to vote on all other Consent Agenda items? Motion made by Commissioner Canham, second. Second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bandima, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, and Richardson. Motion passes 9-0. We're now gonna return to the items that were pulled for presentation, questions, discussion, and then we'll vote each item as we go. We'll start with item 8.05, Policy ECAE, School Police, Second Reader.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam CEO, other distinguished members of the board and cabinet.
Thank you. Let me introduce Mr. Ed Clark from the Maryland Center for School Safety to kick off our presentation tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Sandalistas. My name is Ed Clark, and I'm the Executive Director of the Maryland Center for School Safety. Many months ago, we were asked by Dr. Sandalistas to provide technical assistance and professional guidance to the Baltimore City School Police Force in the review and modification of their current general orders as the force transitions to a community policing and problem-solving agency. I'd sort of like to set the stage and put this task in perspective. I'm a retired Montgomery County Police Captain and a strong community policing advocate. This process that was invoked was extremely thorough and comprehensive and included extensive research into other school police departments, general orders, policies and procedures, best practices, youth diversion programs, and mental health services. The review process included consultation to Judge Stephen Teske of Clayton County, Georgia, a leading national expert on school-to-prison pipeline causation and solutions. In addition, the review process also included outreach to numerous stakeholders, including community members, student advocates, students, parents, educators, school administrators, and representatives from both the Public Defender's Office and the State's Attorney's Office. And I really want to compliment Mr. Strayker because he did an outstanding job in reaching out on multiple occasions to so many different advocate groups and stakeholders to get their input there. The review process and redrafting of the general orders conducted by both Mrs. Strayker and Chief Ham is not the normal process for school police and other law enforcement departments' review and modification of their general orders, and I know this firsthand. The review process sets the Baltimore City Schools and School Police Force as a leader in developing general orders, policies, and procedures that reflect both a community policing and problem-solving process with a strong focus on student engagement and outreach. So again, we want to thank everyone here for the opportunity to support this task, and I'm available to answer any questions throughout the presentation.
And thanks for your help. Thanks for your help.
You're, you're quite welcome. That's our commitment to school safety and security throughout the state, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Chief Ham. With implementation of the new policy, it will be easier to update our general orders. This means a few things. One, we will be able to adopt any, adapt any changes in legislation quickly. Two, we will be able to continue to have discussions with the community organizations and our union to best meet the needs of our students in keeping them safe. We're starting point to a continued discussion on how to ensure that students and staff have a safe, secure environment for teaching and learning. You want to go with Joe? All right, so what I wanted to share with you are some of our arrest numbers going back to '08, '09 school year. As you can see, there's been a significant decline in school-based arrests of our students. If you can look at '08, '09, we arrested 971 students. This year, we only arrested 58 students. So we're only arresting students for the most serious violations that we can have, such as like robbery, rape, handgun violations, things of that nature. Everything else, we're diverting and we're sending to intervention programs, and we're not sending these cases to the Department of Juvenile Services because we don't want to be part of the school-to-prison pipeline, and we want to make sure our kids are successful and are safe in school. Go to the next one. So as you can see, this was '15, '16, and Ed can attest to this, being under MSDE, that we all, all 24 jurisdictions have to report out on school-based arrests to the Maryland State Department of Education. As you can see on the chart, we arrested 90 students in the '15, '16 school year, but you can see how significant our arrests are under some of our jurisdictions that surround us, that are in comparison to us. So I just wanted to share that with you. As a, as a, in terms of adding a youth senate version of the Miranda rights, which we will discuss in detail later in this presentation, we, the CEO is recommending that we adopt the youth senate Miranda. You can go to the next one, Joe. And...
So I also do want to, based on feedback from stakeholders, we did add revisions, youth-specific revisions to our Use of Force General Order, which I know was addressed during public comment earlier. That came specifically from the NAACP LDF, which I thank them for their continued input throughout this process, and we look forward to continuing to work with them whether this gets approved tonight or not. And also, in direct response to advocate feedback, we created a de-escalation general order, which really pairs directly with the Use of Force General Order, and that specifically kind of talks about the de-escalation process to prevent the use of force.
Thanks, Joe. You can go to the next one. And so, in our new policy, we came up, and Joe's been instrumental in this, and Ed as well, we, and Amanda Ellison, I don't know if she's in the room, but we created a glossary of terms for our general orders and definitions, and also your legal rights if arrested that were recommended by the Maryland Bar Association. All right, so in content, some of our policy standards have governing principles, program goals, focuses on safety, recruitment, deployment, and what's very instrumental is roles and responsibilities. What is the police officer's role in school? What's the administrator's role in school? And so that we can, and I, I keep saying this, so we can stand our own lane while we're in school, and the police officers aren't enforcing school rules, but criminal law, and also public reporting requirements. So also in content, the philosophy and avoidance of criminalization, we do not want to criminalize children for misbehaving in school, for violating code of conduct. Those are things that the administrator should be dealing with, with our support, but we should not solely be dealing with discipline. We, we're there to build relationships with young people and staff and not to be enforcing school rules, telling children to get out the hallway and pull their pants up, take their hats off, and all of that kind of stuff. That, that is not our role in a school building, but we are there to support safety and make sure that kids feel safe coming to us and telling us if they have a problem or if there's gonna be a problem. That's what we want to know, and we also want to protect their anonymity when they do that. So we've, we've been diverting hundreds of cases to different diversion programs, teen court, community conferences. We have not sent any case to the Department of Juvenile Services. We have had about 50 occasions this school year where parents were not satisfied with the diversion program, and they went and filed citizen complaints with Department of General Services, I mean Juvenile Services, which we don't have any control over, but we're not sending these cases to Juvenile Services. Also, de-escalation is important. You know, I, I don't need to tell you, sometimes, you know, adults can escalate situations in, in schools in certain situations, and we're not there to inflame the situation. We're there to de-escalate and, and bring everybody down and calm situations down, and that's why we're in the building. And not to arrest kids, which we have not arrested any student for disruptive behavior, for disorderly conduct in two school years. We, we haven't arrested not one child. And we're getting mental health folks involved in what we're trying to do.
The reason we're flagging that and, and just pausing there is that some of this kind of stuff was what triggered this whole process. You know, enough already with criminalizing our kids for just acting out because they're young people. So I, I, you know, let's keep going, but that, that just resonates with why we started this in the first place, and the advocates were very instrumental in pointing out, like, stop it. And so I really, this is good news.
Yes, ma'am. And so we want to make sure that kids and parents also know how to file complaints, and I'm, I'm pleased to share with you again that we have not had a complaint filed with the Civilian Review Board in the last two school years based off of our interactions with kids, and I think that's huge because in the past, we've, we've had those issues. And I believe that this policy, which we're codifying, if you approve it, is really just letting folks know that, hey, we're already doing this, but now we're putting it in writing that this is what we're gonna do, and this is the charge, and this is what the CEO and the board want us to do with our young people in schools. You go to the next one. So some of the new general orders that we created are general orders on community relations, diversion strategies, understanding our students that have disabilities and how to de-escalate those situations, understanding LGBTQ students, understanding our ESAR students that are coming in from other countries and, and just learning how to understand and deal and getting background on some of our students that are coming in that are, that are new to the country. Also, enforcing traffic on school sites. And also, the main one would be de-escalation, which I feel is very important in a school So we also looked at bias-based policing, child abuse investigations, domestic violence, equal opportunity employment, in-service training, because training is crucial. And, you know, I'd be remiss if I said, the Coalition has been very helpful with us, and basically, they came to us a coup, you know, two or three years ago and said, you know, y'all are jacked up. You need to look at your training. You need to look at your role and responsibilities. You need to look at your policy. So this is all part of a collaboration and working with the community in order to do what's good for kids. And so we also looked at our organizational structure, how we respond to active shooters and, and lock the stakeholders that we work with. What's not listed on there is that we did work with the State's Attorney's Office in looking at some of our policies, but Youth is Resources, Algebra Project, both youth-led organizations, we sat down at the table several times. They provided good feedback on what we wanted to do. They, they came up with the school police... They, they came up with the school police report card accountability tool, which we welcomed. We didn't change and we constantly go back and look at that to, you know, refine what we do and to do, you know, make our job easier by understanding when we have someone in a school setting that should not be there. And we've made changes based off of their recommendations. NAACP, the Officer Hold Child, the Coalition to Reform School Discipline, you know, that we worked with the Union, the FOP, we worked with Campaign Zero, and we worked with several other community organizations with this policy. And I think it's probably the most progressive policy dealing with policing in this country. And so, what I'll, what I'll also delve into, which is not on the PowerPoint, but Joe, you did provide copies of the Miranda for the board. Some members of the Coalition also made recommendations on youth Miranda, which the CEO is recommending to you all this evening. And the traditional Miranda reads as follows. You have the right to remain silent. If you choose not to remain silent, anything you say can and will be used against you in the court of law. You have the right to consult an attorney before any questioning and you have the right to have an attorney present with you during questioning. If you cannot afford an attorney, one will be provided to you. You have the right to remain silent and the right to consult with an attorney at any time during questioning. Waiver of rights. Do you understand each of these rights? Do you wish to answer at this time? The youth senate Miranda reads as follows. You have the right to remain silent, which means you have, means that you don't have to say anything or answer any questions. If you don't want to talk to me, you don't have to. If you, if you do want to talk to me, I will tell other people what you tell me, including the state's attorney's office, the juvenile court, or an adult court judge and a probation officer. You may have the right to talk to, to a free lawyer. That free lawyer works for you and can help you decide if it's a good idea to talk to me. If you want a lawyer, I will wait until you have a lawyer before talking with you about the incident. If you start to answer my questions now, you can change your mind and stop at any time. I won't ask you more questions if you tell me to stop. Juvenile waiver of rights. Do you understand? If yes, then continue. Do you want to have a lawyer? If no, then continue. Do you want to talk with me? If yes, proceed to questioning.
And just so I'm clear, the way we under, the way I've come to understand this from talking and being advised and hearing what the advocates had to say is that to comply with the law, you will read the standard Miranda language followed by the youth version.
Yes, ma'am.
So, your officers will be instructed for all students to read both.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
And that will comply with the law. Is Tammy still sitting here? That, that's, that's, that complies with the law to read the standard? Just want to make, I just want, I want everybody to understand this because this has been a big bone of contention.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Sandalisis and cabinet members. So, compliance with the law really is met through the reading of the traditional Miranda. Providing the juvenile-based Miranda is in addition to...
Okay, so it's both.
It's the sole election of the board. It is not, in our opinion, legally necessary.
Okay, okay. But they, but, but the law says we have to read the first one and it's our choice of what we would be voting on, if I understand you correct, that we want to, we want to add the additional language for the youth, the youth version. Correct?
That is the recommendation before you from the CEO.
Does every, is every, yeah, I want, if you don't mind if we could pause there, I want to give people a chance to ask questions because this has been the confusing part. So, Commissioner Bondima?
This might not make too much sense, but where you have in number four under youths, under the student, you, you, you said you might, you may have the right to talk to a free. What is, why is it necessary to say free? If you say free, can't you slash paid? Or hire a paid lawyer? Number four. When you say free lawyer...
So, you'd like to say you may have the right to speak with an attorney?
Yeah, because you, I mean, I don't know, if you're going to say, if, if you're going to say add free there instead of just saying a lawyer, you should say either free and slash or paid.
Commissioner, Commissioner Chin.
Because it seems to parallel the traditional, and if you look at number four in the traditional, it says if you cannot afford an attorney. So, I think that's, that's just the parallel language.
It, it, I understand what you're saying, but it's, to me, that's a totally different statement when you say free.
I think they're trying to, Commissioner Hassan?
So, would it work for you, Commissioner Bondima, if you said you have the right to talk to an, to a lawyer?
Yeah.
If you need a lawyer, it will be free?
It's the same thing.
Well, oh, yeah, that sounds better than saying...
Let's flip it back.
But, because I think her concern is that if someone has an attorney, they don't want to be forced to have, feel like they have to get a different one or be...
Yeah, well, whatever.
But the converse of that is somebody who has their own attorney probably wouldn't need the second Miranda.
I don't want to go there.
I still find that if, that it's necessary to say you could talk to a free lawyer. I don't know why that's necessary.
So, we can certainly say you have the right to an attorney.
An attorney, okay.
Yes. We cannot represent to any individual that they will qualify for services from the public defender's office, which traditionally is either free or on a sliding scale, as I understand it.
Okay, thank you. So, I, I would, that's an official request for a revision on this? Are people comfortable? Because that's, that'll be what we vote on. Okay.
So, just to clarify...
Commissioner Berkeley?
So, can we read, so what we're saying is we're going to take out the free? Sorry, we're going to take out the free.
Yes. Because they will have already had the original, remember, they will have already had the original Miranda read to them, which would said if you, if, how, what's the, what's the, can you read that again? The language, the official Miranda, what does it say about the, I don't want to misquote it.
The youth senate order, the original.
The original.
Number four, if you cannot afford an attorney, one will be provided to you.
So, that would have already been said.
Right.
And now, we get to the bottom, you may have, you, you may have a right to talk to a lawyer. So, it, it's, it's already been said. People comfortable? Commissioner Cannon?
Oh, no, something different.
Okay, different, thanks, thanks, Michelle. Different, Dr. Bondima, different question? Commissioner Cannon?
I, I'm going back to the, the policy and just had a question on it. I want, on the compliance section of the policy, it's not clear that, that we will ask our command force or our police officers to go through an annual review and be kind of evaluated based on the metrics of this, you know, of the, you know, the, what's been outlined within the policy. So, can you just talk to me about the, we, we should have an, you know, our officers should be reviewed and they should be reviewed based on what we outline in this policy and we should track how many ones are, you know, successful and not successful based on our review.
What, what I can say, Commissioner, is that honestly, we're codifying what we're already doing. We've already implemented a lot of the changes already that we have in the policy to date and along with the, the state requiring, the Maryland Police Correctional Training Commission requiring us to have 18 hours of training, which is state mandated. We also do that training during the PD sessions and you know that once a month. And we do that, we review our policies and procedures during that time. We're currently in the process of doing our evaluations right now. And we have looked at results from the last report card and we will look at the results from the current report card along with speaking with administrators and students and monitoring our officers being in compliance and also holding them accountable by them also signing off on receiving these new policies.
Wait, so, let me just, that was very helpful. So, in, in the report card, there is a section of the overall kind of police force and how we're, like, how they're doing based on their evaluations?
Exactly, Commissioner. The, the, the report card is already implemented in the 37 schools where we have police officers assigned and we not only look at the overall data from all the results, but we also, through Officer OAA and Ms. Jones, we were able to look at each individual school and how kids rated the police officer in the school in, in each individual learning environment and the interactions and whether or not they felt like our police officers treated them like criminals, whether they felt like we contributed to, you know, the conduct, I mean, the climate, positive culture and climate in the school. All of that is outlined in that report card that Youth Resources and Algebra Project developed for us. And we had no input in that. We, we took what they brought to the table. We didn't change it. We didn't add anything. These were the kids that came to us and told us, this is what we want. And we accepted it and we looked at it.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, and Joe, maybe you can jump in here too, is to say within the compliance piece, what I want to make sure is that there's an annual review of our police force, which there is, and that the, and it's aligned to these, to, to, to this approach to policing and that we, we include that, those numbers within the school report card. So, it's kind of like with teachers, like satisfactory, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, you know? Based on the metrics around what we, what we deem to be like good, like a satisfactory evaluation, we're reporting that out and I'd like to see that as part of the compliance piece of the, the policy.
Yes, sir.
So, just logistically, is that, when we vote, are we voting on that, with that amendment? I'm, I'm looking at, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I...
I know, I didn't write it, so, you know, I'm confident that they could write that in it, but I don't...
I just want to make sure because... Okay, we'll vote on it as it is with that understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, I'd simply just like to once again extend my thanks and gratitude for the team and the immense amount of work that you put in. And to add to your community engagement slide, for people that may not remember, we started this work in the prior administration and there were hundreds of parents and students and principals and teachers as well as local business owners that came out to give their input. So, this has been a two and a half, three-year process, so certainly, certainly very, very robust. The other thing I'd also like the community to keep in mind is now that we have a policy committee and we're getting annual reports, policies are really being able to be what they're supposed to be, which is living, breathing documents that are able to be amended and modified as necessary. And sometimes, you just have to dance to figure out what needs to be shifted. So, so thank you for that and whenever we're ready, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve with the amendments as mentioned this evening.
So, Commissioner Kashani, on the youth senate Miranda, I just want to clarify for number four, what the board wants the language to be. And so, one of the proposals would be you may have the right to talk to an attorney or a lawyer. If you cannot pay for a lawyer, you may be able to have, to get a free lawyer who can help you decide if it's a good idea to talk to me.
That sounds good.
Okay.
People clear? That's, that is the single amendment that we're, that we're, that's the single revision to what we're voting on. What Peter said, we're, we're not, we're not suggesting some official language, but it's an understanding. So, when we see this annual review, we should recognize that that's in there, including the police review of the force. Got that? Other, thank you.
Commissioner Kashani?
Commissioner McFadden?
So, to be clear, the traditional Miranda will be read in addition to those, these waiver rights that we see at the top?
Yes, sir.
And then, the youth senate will be read regardless?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Ken, I just want to pose a question to the, the board just saying, for the sake of the public, do we need both and why do we need both of these read?
I'll take a shot at this. The case that's been made is that young people may not understand the implications of the Miranda warning and may inappropriately speak to police people and other adults who are, after they've been arrested. Is that accurate?
I, I also do want to say Kings County in, in Washington State is the one place that we keep being referred to and I actually spoke with the sheriff's office twice and they were really interested that we were talking about this in Baltimore City. And they informed me that Seattle and Tacoma are two cities inside of Washington State and neither of those police jurisdictions do youth Miranda and that only the Kings County Sheriff's Office does youth Miranda. So, they were really interested in what we were doing because they couldn't find anybody near them, even the jurisdictions within Kings County, that use youth Miranda. So, to answer, to go off of Commissioner McFadden's question, this, this, we would really be pioneers in this, so it's a, it's kind of a new thing.
I think, if I may suggest, that Commissioner Hamm, also in response to Commissioner McFadden's question, informed the board of how our current protocol regarding the reading of Miranda and having parents present in most instances when juveniles are detained in question.
And so, just so you know, there's only one case that I'm aware of this school year out of the 58 students that we arrested this school year. I'm only aware of one case where Miranda was written, read to a student and that student was charged as an adult in that particular case. But in any cases where we arrest students who are charged as juveniles, the parent has to be present during questioning or the case will be suppressed. Whatever they say, in other words, will be thrown out of court if the parent is not there unless the child is charged as an adult.
Make sure people are comfortable with this. I'm, I'm looking, Commissioner Richardson, do you have a question?
I do. I was just trying to figure out how to ask it, but I thought in some of our pre-reading, there was this concern about prosecution and the youth Miranda, so...
Because it's...
How, what's the question, though?
Are you referring to the final piece of advice we got?
Yes, I am.
Counsel Turner, could you share, could you share with the general public and the board the final piece of counsel that we got? Because we were, we wanted to make sure we did as much research as possible. Joe, you did extensive research, but we wanted to cover as many bases as we could. Thanks, Commissioner Richardson.
So, I believe what you're referencing is the outreach that we conducted with the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office.
Yes.
I spoke with the chief deputy state's attorney, whose name I'll have to find for you momentarily, and he, on behalf of the state's attorney's office, opposes providing a youth Miranda. His concerns, reference there being different Mirandas given when we have concurrent jurisdiction. There are times when the Baltimore City School Police Force is the initial investigator or responding agency and then Baltimore City Police would take over. And his concern is if a youth is given two different Miranda advisements by us and then a third one by the city police, that it may have some negative impact. He also thought that the youth Miranda was unnecessarily long and complex.
Hmm, so, we have a situation where we have the full policy and general orders that includes this, this part, the youth Miranda. So, is it possible to vote in two parts? What I, what I'd like to do first is to take a motion, I'm looking at you, Tammy, to make sure I do this right, to take a motion on whether or not the board wants to include the youth Miranda. um, include the youth Miranda, which would mean that in all cases they would read both. They cannot not read the standard Miranda, okay? If, depending on how the board votes on the youth Miranda issue, will then vote on the full policy and general orders, which will include the result of the first vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Reasonable?
That's correct.
Commissioner Hassan?
Uh, Mr. Turner, just a quick question. When the state's attorney responded, they responded as if it was the youth Miranda as a standalone, not as a redundancy, correct? Was I correct in my reading? That their, that their advice against was if it was a standalone rather than as a, as a second sort of paraphrasing redundancy.
Let's let her find the question. It's a good question.
I just wanna confirm before I say anything on the record.
Try to maintain.
No, 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 we're just having a conversation and, and one of, uh, just, just, just wondering, um, with the waiver of rights statements with traditional Miranda, I could, I could see a case where if someone, if, if a youth, uh, were read the standard and did not understand that, that the youth Miranda, it, it's, it's pretty much a paraphrase of the, of, you know, to use it in that particular way. But I do see some redundancy in just repeating the same thing two different ways, but just wondered.
She's looking. I, I want her, I want her to be able to answer Commissioner Hassan's question.
Okay. So the question, one of the questions posed was his opinion or whether he had a preference, whether the youth specific Miranda be given in addition to or instead of the traditional Miranda warning or advisement.
So he, so.
And his response was the traditional Miranda and no other.
So he did understand that it was both? Or she, he? It was a he. Mike, was Michael Schatz?
Yes.
Schatz now. Everybody clear on, everybody clear? So.
So Commissioner Kashani, you're gonna pull out?
So we're gonna vote first on the youth Miranda issue. So if everybody could, if we could focus for one second, hey guys? If we could focus for one second? Uh, no, that's okay. Uh, oh, no, no, but that, I wanted, but I actually didn't wanna take a motion till, no, I, I know you're working, I'm, I'm not questioning that. Um, uh, hmm. Can I have a motion to include the youth Miranda be read in addition to the standard Miranda in all cases? Can I have a motion to include the youth Miranda in addition to the standard Miranda in all cases? Do I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Hassan. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor. Commissioners Hassan and Bondima, all opposed. Commissioners McFadden, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson. Uh, motion fails seven to two with no abstentions, so the policy will move forward with the standard Miranda. We appreciate everybody, what do you mean, no?
You would also need to vote to approve the policy and the.
Okay, okay, my, okay. I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, to vote on the proposed school police policy and associated general orders.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Hassan, second. Second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley and Richardson. Motion passes nine zero. We appreciate, um, this is, uh, complex. We appreciate, um, everybody's time and input and patience, particularly with the, the last issue we just discussed. Let's just say that we, we've, we've, all this work has gone into this and now we're gonna move forward. Let's continue as a community to keep our eyes on this, you know? Because if stuff comes up, that, that, we, we can revisit issues, we can revisit part of this, but at this point in time, we, we, we've, we've just made the decision to move forward and, and appreciate the efforts. That does not mean that going forward, if things, you wanna continue to discuss some things, this does not shut down communication on this issue. And I, I think we can tell from the people that we're working with, uh, especially our, our chief of police, um, that this is an open door on these kinds of issues. So we hope everybody will stay at the table on this and we definitely appreciate your time. Thank you.
Her name. The special thing that we, yeah, she literally, she technically works for another company.
Next item, item eight point zero six was also pulled, the two thousand eighteen charter school, uh, eight, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen charter school applications for opening in two thousand nineteen, twenty. I wanna, I wanna say upfront, this is gonna sound, um, a little bit, like a little bit of a cumbersome process and it'll sound like, we're gonna sound a lot like robots. Maybe you already think that? Sorry. Um, uh, but there's a legal, uh, script that we're, that we, we are supposed to read that we're gonna follow. So we're gonna repeat the same script for each, um, for each school, we'll take each school in order. Um, in, in each case, we're gonna start, start with Ms. Alvarez.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners and Dr. Santalisis. I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the executive director of the Office of New Initiatives.
And I'm Trevor Roberts. I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
Um, first, before we get into, um, looking at the actual applications, I wanna thank all of the applicants who applied, um, undertaking to create a proposal and to do the community outreach and all the work that it takes to go into submitting an application, um, takes a lot of commitment. Uh, we have a few applicants who have applied multiple times. Um, so it, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of thought, uh, and either people are, who are stepping up with sincere desire to serve, um, our students in our community. Uh, so I just wanna, um, acknowledge the work that I know all of the applicants put into the process, um, cause it's not easy. Um, and, um, it takes a lot of, uh, thought and careful consideration. I also wanna acknowledge, um, the Charter and Operator-led Advisory Board, uh, which is made mostly of, uh, you know, people who volunteered their time. Uh, it's an intensive process to review, um, the, the applications, um, and to, um, develop recommendations for the CEO on, um, the recommendations. So I just went to start off with acknowledging that. Um, the, uh, first slide just kinda goes over the process. So we received, um, applications on March twenty-second. Actually, we received them on March twenty-third. Sorry, there was a snow delay. Um, the first step that applicants have to go through is a technical review. Uh, once, uh, if applicants, um, pass the technical review, then they go to, um, a review, a full overview by the Charter and Operator-led, um, Schools Advisory Board and District Staff. Those recommend, the, uh, for next step is the, um, Advisory Board interviews applicants and they develop a set of recommendations that are shared with the CEO. Uh, we formally presented the applications at the May eighth board meeting. On May twenty-second, um, each of the applicants had the opportunity to present themselves to the board and take questions directly to the board, as well as provide supplemental information, um, to the board. And we're here tonight, um, to formally share the CEO's recommendations, um, as well as for the board to vote, um, on the recommendations. Um, the board has been and has in its possession reviewing, um, all of the materials submitted by each of the applicants. So that's the complete application packet. Uh, any supplemental information provided by applicants, um, to us has been shared with the board. Um, the recommendations, the advisory board shared, uh, with the CEO has also been shared with the board. Um, and so, and from there, we're gonna move forward. Um, there were five applications submitted this year. Um, since we're gonna discuss them in detail, I'm gonna kinda skip that summary. So the Northwood Opald Community Academy Incorporated, uh, submitted an application, um, to start a school called the Aim Sandtown Freedom and Democracy Academy. Northwood Opald Community Academy, also known as NACA, um, is a current operator, uh, in Baltimore City Schools. They operate a charter school, um, that serves elementary grades, as well as the NACA Two Freedom and Democracy Transformation School that serves students in grades six through twelve, um, both in northeast Baltimore. Um, they're proposing to replicate its, um, elementary program in the Sandtown Winchester neighborhood of West Baltimore. Um, the school's proposed grade configurations for elementary students. Um, the application had several strengths, which include, um, a thoughtful approach to using culturally relevant material in the academic plan. Um, they also received, uh, a federal grant, uh, for replication and expansion of, um, charter schools. However, there are several aspects of the application that were not strong. The academic, academic plan did not detail how it improves student outcomes. The accountability plan did not show, um, the same growth expectations for all students. For example, they only expected one year's academic growth for students who have been enrolled in the school at least two consecutive years, um, rather than across all students. Um, the description of the data cycle was general, does not show how data would be specifically used to inform their instructional practices, professional development, students' support and use of resources. Uh, while the application speaks about broad community needs, it does not speak to the specific needs of students in Sandtown, nor how they would meet those needs. Um, the plan for students with disabilities, uh, did not demonstrate understanding of current best practices, uh, for serving students in this population and focused, uh, almost exclusively on compliance with state and federal laws. Uh, it did not demonstrate an understanding of how to meet the continuum of needs, uh, for students with disabilities. Uh, it did not adequately explain how instruction would be differentiated for students below grade level or gifted and talented students. As for the reasons that I presented on behalf of Dr. Sonia Book and Santalisis, the recommendation is to not approve a charter for Aim Sandtown Freedom and Democracy Academy.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
I'd like to ask if any board members have, uh, questions for staff or any items to discuss regarding this application? With that, I'd like to ask Commissioner Cannon to make a motion.
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the testimony given at the board work session and the application and supplemental materials provided by the applicants, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor of accepting the CEO's recommendation? Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson.
Baltimore International Academy Incorporated, um, submitted an applicant, uh, application to open, um, a charter school in West Baltimore called Baltimore International Academy West, uh, to replicate its current elementary middle school program, also located in the northeast. Um, the application had several strengths, which include, um, the application makes a strong case for the academic benefits of language immersion. Um, it, the academic plan was strong and included details on how they would do everything from their lesson planning to assessment and accountability measures and how those would be used to improve student outcomes. The application presented evidence of their efficacy of the academic program. Um, this school has a successful international graduate program in its current location and would be able to offer an IB in the new location. Um, and, um, the applicant has a strong recruitment plan to attract teachers with the language skills and certifications needed for an immersion program. For these reasons, I, I present on behalf of the CEO, Dr. Sonia Book and Santalisis, the recommendation to approve the replication of Baltimore International Academy.
I concur. I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions from the board for staff or other items for discussion? Commissioner Cannon?
I move that based on the consideration, the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the testimony given at the board work session and the application and supplemental materials provided by the applicants, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second? Commissioner Bondima? All in favor? Commissioners Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson, all opposed? Commissioner McFadden, any abstentions? Uh, motion passes eight, one with zero abstention.
Commonwealth Education Connections, um, submitted a proposal to open a middle and high school program in East Baltimore using international and global affairs-focused curriculum and a hands-on learning, um, approach to prepare students for college and career. Um, the application had several, um, weaknesses. Uh, it did not include, um, a true curriculum. Um, it basically listed textbooks and the use of Apex Curriculum. Um, the application did not provide evidence of the efficacy of its approach. Um, there is not clear differentiation between the plan for middle and high school students. The assessment accountability plans are not, were not tied to measurable goals. Uh, the application showed a lack of awareness of current, um, the current assessments for students. Um, they refer to preparing students for the MSA, uh, which is no longer an assessment in the state of Maryland, uh, as well as, um, using a, uh, an assessment called the ESTAT that is meant for K-12, um, is not meant for K-12 education, but for assessing faculty in a, um, higher ed environment. Um, they did not provide a plan for meeting the continual needs for students with disabilities. Um, they provided no plan for gifted and talented students or, um, and their plan for students below grade level was, um, vague. Um, the founding board has limited knowledge in education and no experience in opening or running a school. Um, the application listed support from, uh, entity called Churchill Swartz, a PR firm. Um, staff contacted, the phone number was not, but was, the phone number was not in operation. Um, the address, um, listed for the firm indicated that it occupied the fifty-third floor of a building which only has forty-five floors, um, and staff could not find a website, uh, and were unable to reach, uh, the person who signed the letter. Additionally, they indicated support from an entity called Harvard, Oxford, Princeton Education University Academy. Again, staff found that the, the number provided was not in service, um, contacted the U.S. Postal Service, who indicated based on their databases that the address that they provided does not exist. We could not find a website for the organization and was not able to contact the signer of that, that letter either. It is for the reasons that I presented on behalf of Dr. Sonia Book and Santalisis, that the recommendation is not to approve the charter for C E C Baltimore campus.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there questions from the board for staff or other discussion items? Commissioner Cannon?
I move that based on, uh, upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the testimony given at the board work session and the application and supplemental materials provided by the applicants, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Chinia, all in favor? Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes nine zero.
The DaVinci Collaborative, uh, Incorporated proposes to open a high school built around an interdisciplinary blended and project-based curriculum, leveraging technology to create personalized learning plans for each student. The school would operate on a year-round, round calendar. Um, the application had strengths, which include provided evidence of efficacy of individual elements of the curriculum, um, has strong community support, has formed an advisory group of community partners to facilitate internships and hands-on learning opportunities, um, and have a strong founding board with a variety of experience implementing aspects of the, uh, proposal in public and private school environments. However, there were several aspects of the application that were not strong. The curriculum described in the, um, The curriculum described in the application is ambitious and complex to deliver, and the application did not demonstrate capacity to implement it fully. For example, except for each element that would be a component of this school, all of them require intensive training, support, and planning time for teachers, which were not evident in the application. They want to be a personalized learning school, requires a lot of development, it's a different way of instructing. It means that students would have choice in how teachers are delivering their instruction, as well as choice in the content, as well as choice in the product, as well as being arts integration, which also requires intensive training and staff support to understand that philosophy of instruction. Additionally, they would offer sheltered instruction for EL students. Sheltered instruction is where duly certified teachers who possess a content certification as well as an ESOL certification teach students. And they would use the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, which is a model used by teachers to develop effectiveness in their practice around EL students. It includes everything from lesson planning to the data cycle for this population of students. While that is a good protocol to use, it requires intensive staff support and training. And it's not clear how, with all these differing approaches, how they would interact, how they would handle conflict between these approaches, nor how they would integrate into a coherent style of teaching and learning. Additionally, the proposal relies on online tools in many areas, making it a blended approach to instruction, which is not really fully discussed or explained within the application. The application is also proposing that students would have the ability to select different course offerings based on their student needs and ability, but does not fully explain how that would also be implemented, nor how staff would monitor that selection and ensure that staff had time to learn all of the different various components of all those different approaches. For the component of the plan around sheltered instruction, in order to implement, the school would need to have teachers duly certified in ESOL and core content areas. In particular, their plan is to offer the sheltered instruction in math, science, and social studies. And so finding teachers who are certified both in ESOL and math, or ESOL and science is difficult, and their recruitment plan was general and did not really go into details of how they would find people who met those particular qualifications. In addition to the deficiencies noted, the district has excess capacity of high school at the, of seats at the high school grades. We've closed 13 high schools since school year 1314, including two in southeast Baltimore, where DaVinci plans to open a school. As for the reasons that I presented on behalf of Dr. Sonia Book and Santa Lisa's, the recommendation is not to approve a charter for the DaVinci Collaborative High School.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Any questions from board members to staff or other discussion items on this proposal? Commissioner Frank?
I think sometimes you've heard me talk about the intersection of decisions we make about schools and communities. And with respect even to the Sandtown proposal, I think it very much comes out of the notion that schools should be the center of strong communities. And I do think when there is, when we're looking at charter applications that may not sort of hit all the bases, another factor that should be considered is how does this school and this location under this leadership affect sort of the overall enrollment strategy for the district, the overall strategy for the city, which is to grow our city, keep families here, and attract families here? I, like the advisory committee, supported this application with reservations. I think it's, I very much accept the recommendations and the concerns, but I note it's kind of humorous that our criticism of this application is that it's too ambitious, where in other cases we find that they're deficient. In this case, we're saying they want to do all these things, but you can't find duly certified teachers, and you can't do this, and they want to do this. And I just wonder out loud whether there should be another step in the process, because if we get an application that wants to achieve the moon and the stars and the sun, but we're not sure whether they can do it, should we shut them down at this process, at this point in the process? Or should we give them an opportunity to do it? And then we can judge them at that point? Because I think we're missing an opportunity here to provide something that's different. I think the southeast part of the city is a growing part of the city. I think the fact that the high schools are under enrolled might be a reflection of choice. Maybe parents aren't choosing to send their kids to the high schools in southeast Baltimore. And maybe this is an opportunity to meet a target population that's not being served by families in southeast Baltimore. So for those reasons, and I understand and very much respect the concerns about the academic focus, but for those reasons, I found this a very credible application, and I would be supportive.
Can I just say something just for clarity? So my statement, for high schools, students go through choice, so they're not based on neighborhood. So the statement about seats are just generally about high schools. I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Cannon?
I really appreciated that comment, Commissioner Frank. But what I struggled with when I read this application was the ability to pull it off in a quality way, that there was so much going on. I didn't see, for me who read it, didn't feel like it was coherent enough. And so that's, that's, that, so I was, I was impressed by the overall kind of concept and the approach, but then it really comes down to execution, implementation, and that's where I had reservations.
I will just add that, I mean, ultimately, the theory of change for any of this is leadership, and I don't know if it's possible to characterize the founders who are proposing this, whether they've had experience in other schools, whether we have judgments that we can speak to in terms of those who are proposing this, and their ability to carry it out based on their experience or successes in other similar endeavors. Do we have that at all?
So members of the founding board have experience in Baltimore City. Some of them are part of Crystal Ray, which does do some of the, some of the components that are included in the application.
Commissioner Richardson?
I was just going to concur with Commissioner Frank. About this particular part of town is extremely, is growing extremely fast, and many of the schools that are there are overcrowded. And so I do see, it would be a benefit, I think, to the whole city if we did have a quality high school, especially in this part of town. So my only question is, and you don't have to answer this today, but it's going to be a question that I would like for us to just think through, is what is the district's plan, right, around this idea of overcrowding areas, and how do we build up the supply so that we can meet the demand, especially in this part of town?
Angela, do you want to restate for clarity the difference between the location of high schools and the enrollment? Because I think there's some confusion that high schools are not zoned.
I understand that.
Okay, just want to make, I just want to make sure.
I do understand that. Yeah, I do understand that. But more kids or families may select to stay in their neighborhood if there were a quality option there.
Fair enough. I'm not editing the question, I just want to make sure we are clear. Thank you. Other thoughts, questions? Commissioner Cannon?
I got you, I got you, I got you. I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the rationale of the CEO, the testimony given at the board work session, and the application supplemental materials provided by the applicants, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hassan. All in favor of accepting the CEO's recommendations? Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bandima, Cannon, Kashani, Chinia, Berkeley, all opposed? Commissioners Frank and Richardson, motion passes seven two with no abstentions.
Green Street Academy Incorporated operates a 612 charter school in southwest Baltimore and proposes to add an elementary program to its current program focused on green and sustainable practices, literacy, mindfulness, and lifelong love of learning. The application's strengths include a strong commitment to and knowledge of southwest community, a strong plan for students with disabilities, and it's a strong record as an operator. However, there are several aspects of the application that were not strong. The academic plan was not tailored for elementary-age students. It relied heavily on the school's experience in middle and high school grades. Application did not go into detail on how the school's sustainability and green-based programming would be different, or would meet the needs, or what it would look like for elementary-grade students. They did not describe how staff development would be tailored for an elementary environment. There was no plan for the identification and provision of services to students who are gifted and talented, or below grade-level students or English learners. The applicant did not solicit community support for elementary program outside of its current families. Community partnerships were focused on providing supports and internship opportunities for middle and high school students, and did not describe how they would use those to support elementary students. As for the reasons that I presented on behalf of Dr. Sonia Book and Santa Lisa's, that the recommendation is not to approve a charter for Green Street Elementary School.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Questions for the staff, comments on other points for discussion? Commissioner Cannon?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the testimony given at the board work session, and the application and supplemental materials provided by applicants, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor? Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bandima, Kashani, Chinia, Berkeley, all opposed? Commissioners Cannon, Frank, Richardson, motion passes six three, no abstentions.
Latin Schools of America proposes to open an all-boys school that offers a rigorous academic instruction and integration of global culture through partial language immersion and STEAM programming. The school would also have a boarding program for students, included related community revitalization projects. The applicant's strengths include college and career, a college and career readiness plan that starts early in middle school and leverages university partnerships. They have the support of the University of Baltimore and various organizations. However, there were several aspects of the applications that were not strong. The academic plan did not sufficiently address the needs of students in the community it intends to locate, does not provide, does not offer evidence of how the partial language immersion program would be differentiated for students at different language ability levels. The plan for students with disabilities was limited and focused on meeting basic state and federal requirements. There was no plan for meeting the needs of students who are below grade level. The professional development plan did not fully align to the curriculum it presented. The application did not clearly show how assessments would be used to guide instruction. Applicant acknowledges in the application that there was limited community support despite their outreach efforts. The application has an underdeveloped plan for staffing and recruitment. It's not clear how they would find teachers for aspects of their program, and they rely partly on having part-time teachers in core content areas, teaching and doubling up on duties in the boarding program. The budget submitted was unrealistic and relies on grants and revenue streams that have not been secured, which are necessary given the additional costs needed to implement a program which includes boarding students. They assumed receiving the MSDE startup grant, plus an additional $250,000 a year in unspecified grants. And they assumed the state legislature would allocate additional funding, commiserate with the seed school for its program. As for the reasons that I presented on behalf of Dr. Sonia Book and Santa Lisa's, that the recommendation is not to approve a charter for Baltimore Latin School.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Questions from the board for the staff? Other comments? Commissioners Hassan and then Frank?
Given this application was submitted late, does voting to not approve preclude them from making revisions and resubmitting next year?
No, no. So any applicant that you did not approve has the right to reapply.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Frank?
Following up, sorry, following up on that. Just technically, why are we reviewing an application that was submitted late? Are we also giving a waiver to allow consideration? How does that work?
So we're required per board policy, IHB, to review the application. The penalty for submitting an application late is that if you were to approve it, it would delay its opening by a year for submitting an application late.
My question is generally, I'm sure you would know, Madam Chair, are there opportunities for charter operators or aspiring charter operators to learn how to apply, learn to anticipate the questions that they will have, and where to go, and write these applications better? Does that exist?
Yeah, it might, does it exist through the Maryland Charter School Alliance? I don't know the official name, and is there something in MSDE?
So, so one, we provide technical assistance sessions. The applications themselves are public documents, so applicants can review approved applications or denied applications from prior years where the process is completely closed. So people have the ability to do that. Additionally, the Maryland Charter Alliance of Charter, Public Charter Schools holds its own sessions to assist applicants in applying and writing applications.
And have we assessed how, whether they're effective or successful, these various ways of getting support?
So I don't know the efficacy of Maryland alliances, Maryland Charter Alliances work. They are an organization that has a membership from a lot of successful charters within the district, so there's that, but I don't, I can't speak to the efficacy of that. I will say that the process is rigorous, and, you know, it's rightfully rigorous. We're talking about public dollars, and we're talking about years of life for our students, and so we want to make sure that people are really ready to open a school, because you don't get fourth grade back, and you don't get ninth grade back.
You know, I agree completely. I just, you know, for example, at Hopkins, we had an effort to try to attract more minority construction companies to participate in our construction programming and our procurement. And so Hopkins offered a 10-week course on what you need to do to be a contractor to respond to a major institutional procurement request. And so I wonder, I'm just sort of wondering this out loud, because so much of what we heard tonight were sort of unforced errors in some respect. I mean, people didn't include basic information about their academic program, and yet they expect us to hand over, as Chair said, two, three, five million dollars with applications that simply weren't responsive to basic information. And so the fact that we get these applications that are deficient in so many ways, I just think it's easier for you and easier for the board to receive applications that are more informed, sort of better prepared, anticipate questions that'll be asked. I think it helps everybody, and I'm not putting that burden on you, seriously. I'm just wondering if there's a partner out there that might see this as a need that would help all of us get better applications.
I mean, we have had conversations with other community partners, with, you know, other organizations that want to support this effort. And we've actually encouraged, I mean, I've personally had conversations where we know that there are folks who have ground-level experience with our young people, with the communities, but based on where their application is, based on the thoroughness of what's required, they're not. So we've definitely encouraged, we can certainly look out, but I mean, you're right, some of it is the capacity that we have internally, but it is, you know, I've had at least two or three conversations with different organizations about providing more of that support.
An ongoing challenge. When it first started in 1997, CPHA used to do it, but because nobody else was available. And so it's evolved with the charter networks, but it is, it's an ongoing issue. Commissioner Bandima?
I'll make a comment, sort of agreeing with Commissioner Frank. Listening to and reviewing all of the charter school applications, it seems that in most cases, even when they, people reapply, they cases, even when they, people reapply, they tend to be making the same mistakes over and over again. And as a person who writes grants for NSF and all those other companies, they do have a system where you can go in and review, sit in on evaluating, evaluating grants, and I'm hoping that at some point, when people come back to reapply, they will, like you just said, have a workshop, and it might even be a required workshop if you're going to put us through this process of reading, because it's a long, it's a long process. So, maybe we need to make it, if you were rejected once, the second time, you must go through the process with, it would workshop X amount of time, so that you, it'll be even clear, because sometime even writing, even when you write a dissertation, sometime you keep repeating the same mistake and can't get it, you know? You've been told what's wrong, but you can't get it, you know? And when I listen to all of that, it seems that, that seems to be the case, and you could come back, but you have to go through a process.
Well, and I will say this, you know, I will commend the ONI team. I mean, Angela and her team, whenever people have questions, they provide the answer. And again, as we have, and I know just in the two years I've been here, and we have had applications each iteration, and I will only, you know, speak about the folks that we know that have ground-level experience, but who is just not translating, it is a tension. It's a tension because at some point, you're providing guidance, and, you know, the question becomes, how, it's the same kind of question we have in teaching. How much scaffolding do you provide before the recipient of the support has to be able to demonstrate independent capacity? And we know that, for example, you know, a number of charters do not make it nationally because of fiscal issues, right? And so, even where, you know, and sometimes it's seen as being, you know, menial, and why wouldn't you just give the school to somebody who's really good with the, you know, really good with the program? Well, because fiscal, fiscal issues matter. And so, it's a tension, and it's a balance, and we do want a diverse pool, but at the end of the day, frankly, the easiest part of running a school, as someone who has started two schools in my career, the easiest part of starting a school is the application process. The actual on-the-ground work is, as everybody who has started a school, not just me, can testify to, is the hard part. So, it's a balance, and, you know, we hear the board, and I think, again, that's why we've reached out to partners to provide that support, but it is a balance that we try to strike.
Commissioner Frank?
I just want to clarify, I agree 100%, and I think even if the board, if the staff were to do any more than it's doing, it may even cross the line of conflicts of interest, so I totally respect that. I don't think this is something the district should take on, and agree with that very much. And I also, we have to all say on behalf of the staff, and how wonderful job this was, you provided us with information that was easy to absorb, it was summarized, it allowed us to make decisions, and without that information, we wouldn't have had it, so thank you, Angela.
So, we actually still have one final?
Just one?
We have one final vote.
That we can comment.
Is the comment?
Someone to join in with?
So, let's take the vote on the Baltimore Latin School, and then we'll have closing comments. If you could hold that, that'd be great. Commissioner Cannon?
I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and the ration, I move that based on the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the testimony given at the board work session, and the application and supplemental materials provided by applicants at the board, accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Second? Commissioner McFadden? All in favor? Commissioner McFadden, Hassan, Bandima, Cannon, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson? Motion passes nine-zero. So, that concludes the votes on all the applicants, but there are, there'd be some lingering thoughts and comments, so I turn to Commissioner Bandima.
To second to say, thank you for all the hard work, and both of you, you did excellent job reviewing, because it was a lot of information, and I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, so I really want to acknowledge Trevor Roberts and my staff, who did the bulk of the work here, a lot of the heavy lifting, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone who's involved. Applicants, successful applicants, non-successful applicants, there's no way to overstate how much time it takes.
Sorry, my microphone was off. I want to say that again. I want to acknowledge that everyone who was involved in this process, the successful applicants, people who weren't successful, it's still a lot of time and energy, the passion is here. I think we all have to commit to just staying in the game and continuing to improve. Thank you. I'd like to turn next to another item. The next item that was pulled was item 10.10, Extended Learning Services: Art with a Heart. If I understand correctly, there was not a particular question on this proposal that we're taking a vote because we have an abstention, so can I have a motion to approve item 10.10? Commissioner Hassan, second. Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bandima, Cannon, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, all opposed. Abstention. Commissioner Richardson? Motion passes eight-zero with one abstention. The last item from the procurement agenda that was pulled is item 10.14, Great Minds. This is the much anticipated, much discussed, oft-debated ELA curriculum. Commissioner Cannon, I'm sorry for the editorial comment, but this, is there a drum in the room that we can roll?
I know.
There you go, thank you very much. We had a musician, as luck would have it. Commissioner Cannon has one final shot at asking you guys some questions.
Well, this has been an incredible process, and the fact that I'm just thrilled of the ELA curriculum we have for our youth, and it's going to be, it's going to help propel us forward, and it's been a rigorous process. It's included a lot of community, and Sean, you've led, from my standpoint, a great process, and I want to thank Dr. Santalisis as well, as a member of the Teaching and Learning Committee. I feel like we're going to be grounded in a rigorous curriculum, but I just, this is for the public's sake. It's a $7.9 curriculum, and...
Seven dollars.
Seven point nine, what did I say?
Nine.
Did I say dollar? I meant million dollar.
Seven dollars and nine cents.
So, it was a great deal, and I really commend the staff. Okay, seven point nine million over five years, but it also was shared with us how much of this is an open source curriculum. So, for me, it's important just for the public's sake, you know, how are these, like, what are the dollars, what do we get for free? And then, I asked for, and I appreciated you sharing it, the breakdown of the dollars per year, and how we're spending these dollars to get our kids the curriculum they deserve.
Great, good evening. Janice Lane, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And basically, what we'll do is answer the first part of the question. Great Minds is not an open education resource for the literacy component, so for wit and wisdom, they are not open resource. As you know, Great Minds is also the developer of Eureka Math. Eureka Math is open resource because the money that was developed was given from race to the top, with the indication for it to continue to be open resource. So, there are components that people can Google and get information around the curriculum that is online, but it is not free or comprehensive, so they can, you cannot access complete lessons, all grade levels, et cetera. So, as you indicated, what we have brought before you in the procurement letter is the actual breakdown that includes the professional development, the comprehensive resources for teachers, so the planning guides, the documents, and the access to the digital resources. That include everything that the teachers need to be prepared to teach the curriculum.
Great, and I just want people to, the public to know too, that it's over, and it's over five years, right? Four or five years? Five years, right? Yeah, so this is investment for over five years that we get. That's great. I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions on this procurement item?
The only thing that we do want to add as a point of clarification is what you see in front of you, broken down for those five-year costs, are the professional development and the resources. We will be bringing a letter back for the texts for students that are included within that.
Wait, I thought that was in there.
So, the texts that were highlighted here are the texts for the teachers, so the manuals that are, that are developed and ready for teachers to utilize. It does not include all the student texts.
Any idea how much that would be? I mean, ballpark?
Yeah, that's, and why are we doing it in two pieces?
Because we got to get it in the hands of people.
Yeah, all right, got it, got it.
We're doing it in two pieces because the texts, we won't be procuring from Great Minds. There's a variety of text providers that can provide the text aligned to the curriculum, so we're currently searching for the best offer, but we're expecting it to be about 3.5 million, and that would be the one-year cost to get everything in classrooms, and that's a book for every student, and then that wouldn't be an annual cost, it would just need to be replenished as time, as the texts wear down, or teachers need to replace.
Sorry, as a non educator in the room, we're still buying books, like, stuff's not online, like, what, like, what about, like, iPads? I mean, seriously?
We tried online with AgileMind.
Okay, I'm just, really, I'm acknowledging my ignorance here.
No, no, and I mean, I, look, I would love to get to the point where we can give every young person in Baltimore City a laptop, and that they can access it from home, from school, that is absolutely, should be the target. We can't wait to teach kids how to read until we get to that point.
Got it. No, it strikes me that the book publishers are, there's like a master, you know, I'm going to stop the editorial comment. It's a, you know, renewable source that you just have to keep buying, but I get it, I get it.
I just have to add, it is something nice about holding a real book every once in a while.
Okay, there's, okay, there's that. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I actually want a question first, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, that's, we're going to get, oh, I guess you guys will get a 3.5 million, that, what year, that's next fiscal year, and we have the dollars budgeted for that? We anticipated this level of dollars for this purchase?
Yes, so the procurement would come over summer. It won't prevent us from getting some initial ordering underway for quarter one, and it will be part of the FY '19 budget.
Okay, thanks, that's all.
Great, thanks. Motion to approve item 10.14, Great Minds. Commissioner Chinia, second by Commissioner Bandima, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, McFadden? I was distracted by the, I was distracted by the, yeah, the magnets. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bandima, Cannon, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson, motion passes nine-zero. We have a new ELA curriculum.
Nicely done, team, nicely done.
And if there's any teachers out there listening, thanks for hanging in there, thanks for your patience and persistence, it was a better process because you participated. That concludes our procurement items, but the funds not... We're now going to get item 18.01, The 21st Century School Buildings Program Quarterly Update. She knows to hit the high points. She knows to hit the high points.
There's 21 seconds.
21 seconds, is that what you want? Is that enough? Is 21 seconds enough?
Yes, it's very easy. My name's Nicole Price, Director of Community Public Relations, we're opening new school buildings. Done.
All right, everybody try to maintain a little longer, sorry, Nicole.
That's okay, it's late, I'm tired too. Not to mention, my stomach is eating my stomach. So, this will be a short presentation, it's mostly pictures, so not as much reading. We'll go over the spring openings, year one and two status, and then community engagement. So, as many of you know, on April the 4th, we opened our second set of schools, Dorthia Height Elementary School, and then Hurst Elementary Middle School. One of the questions we get asked a lot, and one of the reasons we use these pictures, the two on the bottom, is how kids are using the collaborative space, well, I guess the one on the bottom. So, from the start of the first day, students and staff were using a collaborative space. Both of these schools are restorative practice schools, and so they use it across classrooms, they bring kids out to use their collaborative space for morning circle. They also use it as an opportunity just to change up the learning environment for students. Dorthia Height's principal referred to it as the living room of the school, and so the comfortable space that they can take kids to continue learning in instruction, but in a more comfortable environment. Dorthia Height's ribbon cutting was held on March the 17th, huge celebration. We had family members and friends of Dorthia Height attend the ceremony. One of our favorite quotes is from Principal Hanson at the school, "We always tell our children how much we love them, this building speaks it." So, without saying a word...
That's a good look on the CEO.
She was excited as well. Told you, opening new buildings, presentation over. We were unable to schedule an official ribbon cutting for Lynn Hurst Elementary Middle School, because there was some work still going on on the stairwell, and then the date, one of the dates that we selected conflicted with the Big Student March in Washington DC. So, since the board voted to rename Lynn Hurst Wildwood, we are planning a renaming dedication for the school that will be held sometime in July. The name takes effect July 1, and so we're now ordering a sign, and we'll do an unveiling of the new name and a renaming dedication. We know that there were some concerns around changing the name of the school. We're looking at honoring Dr. Calvin M. Carrington, who was a principal of Lynn Hurst, and Sarah M. Horsley, who was a principal of Ragnar, as a means to honor both of those school communities with principals that they felt were really notable and made huge contributions to their communities. And that came out of a meeting with both parents and staff from both Lynn Hurst and Ragnar Heights. More exciting news, we will, in fact, be opening schools this coming September. Right now, we're looking at dates for the week of August the 20th for ribbon cuttings for Pembroke, Robert Poole Building, which is Ace and Independence, Arundo, Cherry Hill, and Forest Park. We're hoping to finalize those dates the end of this week, and get them out on everyone's calendar, as August is definitely a busy vacation month, as well as getting ready for school readiness. I won't go through this entire slide. The top four schools, I just noted as schools that have already opened. The schools in the bottom, Arundo, Robert Poole, Pembroke, Cherry Hill, Forest Park, are scheduled to open this September 2018, and Arlington is scheduled to open September 2019, then moving into the Garrison Building at the end of this school year, and Patterson's opening is TBD, the revised EAP has been submitted, and we're waiting for the other boards to approve it before we can update the schedule for Patterson and Claremont The year-two schools, again, I won't go through the entire slide.
Just a question though, everything was going chronologically, do you really mean Jan, no, no, keep going. Do you really mean January 2020, or do you mean January 2021?
January 2020.
So, you just did it out of order, just because? You're moving right along, you go...
Yes, yes, January 2020.
Oh, it is January 2020.
It's just out of order.
It's just out of order, because your next slide moves us into 2021. I just want to make sure I wasn't misreading this, because...
No, those are correct. Fairmount Hartford is scheduled to open September 2019, Commodore John Rogers, Howland Town, I meant Hartford Heights, Mary E. Robman, and Howland Town 237, September 2020. Baybrook, John Ruhr, Calvin Rodwell, January 2020. Govens, Medfield, and Walter P. Carter, January 2021. Cross Country, Montebello, Robert Coleman, September 2021. Northwood, Calvertin, and James Mosier, I'm sorry, Northwood, that's, so James Mosier should be January 22, so Northwood, Calvertin, and James Mosier, January 2022. Those are the projected school openings for the year, the remaining year-two schools. We'll make sure that it's in chronological order next time.
Matter, I just wanted to make sure it was, it's not a typo.
It's also easier for me to read when it's in order.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure it wasn't a typo, I don't, it doesn't matter.
Makes this presentation go a little bit quicker as well. We do a number of meetings, construction site tours... We do a number of meetings, construction site tours. We actually just did two today, one at Pimlico, I'm sorry, actually, two this week, one at both at Pimlico with staff to get them excited about the opening of the buildings. A number of engagement activities with students, informational meetings, and focus groups and Lego build activities with students as well. Part of those activities came came out of what we were hearing early on, and I think we show this slide every time as a reminder that we are always dealing with, particularly with the closing of receiving schools, dealing with challenges around creating the haves and have-nots. So the receiving schools feel like the haves, and a number of the closing schools often feel like they're the have-nots. And although the building is being built, designed, and planned for students, say, from Ragnar Heights to join Lynn Hurst, or from West Side to join John Eger Howard, now Dorthia Height, as much as you communicate that to them, there's still a sense of loss of tradition school identity. And so we started compiling lists from both schools of what's important to them at their individual school. So for example, Ragnar Heights has a big grandparents group, and Dr. Barnes has agreed to ensure that that grandparents group continues at Lynn Hurst. There's a difference in how they celebrate back to school night and a number of other activities that we're working, talking to Dr. Barnes with, as well as the teachers who are coming over from Ragnar, about which of those activities will be continued to ensure staff and students who are coming from Ragnar feel like they haven't completely lost their identity. That goes along with the name change that has been approved, but that's something that we look at for every school, because this have and have-nots is something that comes up over and over again for students, as well as parents. Those things are phased into our engagement plan. So the bottom chart is the orange is what happens in planning, the number of meetings associated with that, looking at the feasibility study. The gray is what happens once we are working to approve the feasibility study before design starts. And so we look at creating a process for engaging students, parents, and community members around transitioning, combining school programs tied to the overall schedule. It varies from school to school. So for some schools like Calvin Rodwell, we were already into design. We were already in phase three or that blue bucket once, when it was approved for Grove Park to close. And so we have to do a year's worth of work in that process, whereas though with Walter P. Carter and Guilford, that stretched out over the course of the time that we're completing design and construction. A lot of this comes from listening to to students, and you can probably see in there, swimming pools often come up for students or children's. But more importantly, the things that are truly important to students are new, bigger classrooms, better technology, more space. And so while we do hear of things that we may not be able to accommodate, like swimming pools or saunas, we hear a lot more about academics and the importance of teachers. In fact, sometimes we hear of particular teachers that they want to come with them that they don't want to lose, and that sometimes that that person name comes up over and over again. And it's really telling when a student can tell you exactly what that person does and why they want them to come over. And just to wrap up, the last two slides are really, I think, just pictures of different activities. The Lego build activity is something that we, the students really find engaging, one is because it's a hands-on activity. It's time at both the closing and receiving school. They build their own individual spaces. We have a conversation about why that space is important to the school, and then we ask them to work as a group to combine their spaces. And there we are able to have a conversation about the importance or the challenges and opportunities with bringing schools together, using the discussion around Lego and them having to work through bringing their pieces together to make one big happy school. We also do this with schools that are not combining, and students, and recently started having students do a presentation before the architects present their concept plan, so that students actually present their concepts, their spaces, before the architect present their plan to to parents. And students are given a special invitation to invite their parents to hear their presentation, as well as the architect's presentation. And then lastly, we do a number of videos, activity books, the Arundo Activity Book, which went over really well, something to engage students from pre-K to first grade, and then provide them an opportunity to learn about their building. Orientation at Ragnar, so I'm sorry, Lynn Hurst, there were two weeks of orientations. Each grade was targeted, pre-K and K, first and second, third and fourth, fifth and sixth and seventh, all came over to Lynn Hurst for an orientation where they got to use the technology, tour the building, and happy to say that the water fountains were a big hit.
Questions for Nicole? Good job.
A little longer than 21 seconds, but.
Welcome, Ms. Brooks. Thank you. You're the the last presentation of the evening. We know it's late. We are going to give you our undivided attention, but I would say you can assume that we've read the slides, and if you want to hit the highlights, it'd be great. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education.
Good evening. I'm Macon Tucker, Manager of Special Education.
And this evening, we're going to provide for you the Special Education Programmatic Update. We're going to discuss the special education priorities, program programmatic review of special education, along with lessons learned, and provide an overview of our special education action plan. So the special education priorities are educating our students that are receiving special education and related services in their least restrictive environment, ensuring access to high-quality instructional services for our students with disabilities, as well as ensuring that we're closing the achievement gap. In doing that, we provide through our special education staff process, a data analysis of district-level data, as well as school-level and student data, customized professional development for our principals, as well as our teachers, and a tiered system of supports for our schools and our students. During the 1718 school year, we restructured our staff process. And in doing so, we took a laser lens focus around discipline of how we are actually providing supports for our students receiving special education and related services, compliance, academics, as well as transition services. We are cross collaborating with multiple offices. Our ILEDs, our principal supervisors are part of that staff process now, our special education liaisons. We've collaborated with the Office of Suspension Services, our teaching and learning partners, specifically specialized instruction. And we have a fantastic partnership with the Achievement and Accountability, who is providing all of the data and data analysis support for us. We have used our special education dashboard specifically in working during the budget collaborative season, so that we can make sure that we are providing adequate supports around staffing and scheduling to ensure that the instructional models are meeting the needs of our students receiving special education and related services. For professional development, we have customized our professional development. We have provided professional development for both our charter principals and operators, as well as our principals in traditional schools. We provided special professional development for our central office staff, really looking at national trends, as well as providing professional development around the technical assistance bulletins that are coming out from the state. We've done a great deal of work with parents and communities, with parent workshops, as well as our CAC, and going into parent town hall meetings. We have monthly IP chair meetings, and we have also customized a professional development for both general educators, as well as special educators, our related service providers as well. Our tiered system of supports, we've really looked at our compliance reports and specifically provided that technical support to specific schools around developing action plans to support our schools. When we look at our priority, too, access to high-quality instructional services, our specialized instruction partners have really helped us unpack our heat maps, which was first identified during our Teaching and Learning Committee. And we've looked at students that have made two or more years academic progress, and how can we replicate those practices in our other schools? And so we've worked as teams, along with our special education liaisons, our ILEDs, and our ed specialists, to really look at this data and then go out into the schools to see how we can better support our schools. Again, we've collaborated with specialized instruction and the Office of Special Ed to provide systemic professional development for our general educators and special educators. We've partnered with early learning during our monthly IP chair training. And during our CAC meeting, the Office of Teaching and Learning provided for our parents an overview of the new ELA curriculum, as well as had principals come in and talk about the different supports that are provided to our students that are receiving special education and related services. Again, our tiered system of supports, when we're looking at access to high-quality instruction, we have really differentiated, even working with our charter schools around action planning and developing different types of technical assistance and coaching for both the principals, as well as the teachers. So some of the lessons learned during, as we've looked at our programmatic review, we know that we've had monitoring tools for both academic, as well as compliance, but what we were seeing is there was some disconnect. So we've really worked hard to make sure that we're aligning our monitoring tools, so that as we're creating quality IEPs, that we're able then to implement them in both the general education setting, as well as in our self-contained setting, and then going out and monitoring them on a consistent basis, so that we can continue to provide the best services for our students. Looking at making sure that all of our students have access to the core content, regardless of their disability and where they're receiving their services, and also providing professional development to school-based staff, looking at our data and using that to inform our practices and progress monitoring for our students with disabilities. We've also really looked at how we're providing the continuum of services for all of our learners. So currently, we are providing services for our students in the following least restrictive environments. In LRE-A, and that's for students that are receiving their services inside the general ed setting for 80% or more of the time, and that could be full inclusion, co-teaching model, or a small group instruction. LRE-B, when they're inside the general ed setting, 40% to 79%, which is also could be co-teaching, a resource model, which is push-in or pull-out, or a small group instruction. Or LRE-C, and that's inside the general ed setting, 40% or less, and that's usually for our students that are in a self-contained. But what we also notice is for our students that are in a self, a citywide program, which would be for some of our early learning programs, our ED Pride Program, our program for students on the autism spectrum and life skills, many of those students were being identified and then placed in a self-contained environment. And so as we began to speak with teachers, with students, with parents, and really talked about using the data to inform our practices, we talked about, let's look at the services that the student needs, rather than the placement. And so as we move forward for 1819, we're looking at how we're providing the services and where those services can be provided. And so not necessarily just saying, because I'm in a certain type of program, I have to have my services in a self-contained environment, but letting the services drive the placement. So what we did find is that there are some students that are currently receiving services and supports in a life skills program, but because they're included during lunch and also during their resources, their LRE is actually LRE-B. So having those type of informed in conversations, and also with IP chairs and with teachers, we're providing a greater type of service and supports for our schools. So the work ahead. So through this year-long, a programmatic review, getting parent input, also getting principal input by participating in CLN, principal meetings, getting ILED feedback, hearing from teachers, and also from student voices, it helped inform some of our work and our work moving forward. In the next slide, we have a brief video, and I know it's late, but we do want to share this video, of our transition fair, where we actually were able to get some student voice.
Each year, we try to make sure that we're providing the supports and services, so that you all have a smooth transition from Baltimore City Public Schools.
Today is one of efforts that we do with Baltimore City Schools, to make sure that our students are linked to post-secondary options. We have employers here. We have adult service providers. We have colleges, universities, training centers.
Basically, our organization works with youth and other young adults who have disabilities to help them find employment, any supports that they need, such as counseling, career assessments, job trainings, a job coaching.
We was in the sessions, he was telling us about what to do if you got, if you got SSI and all that stuff, NDSI. We transferred over to the other session. They was telling us how to dress proper, dress the proper dress one. Don't have your tattoos showing, have a nice, have a nice suit on, your work clothes, come on time.
There are certain aspects. Now, you do have to be able to physically do the job, but if you're not restricted from the physical activities, absolutely there are parts in the fire department that they can do, as long as they can meet their minimum requirements. 18 years old, Maryland driver's license, high school diploma or equivalency, and background investigation.
But when I go to college, I kind of pick in the major of anybody.
Baltimore City Schools want to help us to learn more, better, and like learn different stuff we never learned at our old school.
My students work on different things to be as independent as possible when they graduate. So here, I'm with a group of students, both in life skills and not in life skills, and I just am kind of taking them to what their strengths are in the classroom. I'm taking them to the different tables and vendors that would be most appropriate for them.
I think it's wonderful. I've been here since they started, and each time, it's wonderful connecting with the students, and maybe some that we've missed while we were at the schools. We can come here and connect with them as well, get them started, and at least put that in their ear, so they can know, hey, that doors is out there for them.
Our aim is to have all of the resource together under one roof, so students, parents, and teachers can find resources available for them, connect them to opportunities, so when our students graduate from Baltimore City, they have fulfilling options ahead of them.
And so some of our collaborative partners, as we have begun to move forward in our work, are we're working closely with Suspension Services and looking at how we're providing supports around suspension and expulsion for students with disabilities, specialized instruction, as we're working at improving academic outcomes for students with disabilities, achievement and accountability, as we're looking at our data analysis, college and career ready, as we're talking about post-secondary outcomes for students with disabilities, early learning, as we're looking at early intervening services for all of our students, the school's office, working again with our ILEDs and our special education liaisons. And so moving forward, as we began to allow the programmatic review to inform our practices, and as we began to look at building an action plan to move forward for its next school year, again, keeping with our priority of educating students in their least restrictive environment, one of our goals was to increase the opportunities for our early learners to be able to, that have disabilities, to be able to be in the classroom with their typical peers. And just one of our sample action steps is to provide explicit training to both our special educators, IP chairs, related service providers, around developmental milestones and age expectations for our very young learners. So what we want to ensure is that all of those that are working with our young learners really understand the developmental milestones for our for our youngest learners, to be able to determine, you know, is this child really displaying a developmental delay? Or is this really age-appropriate for this student? And if so, by allowing them to have opportunities with their typical peers. Also, for our students that are ages six through 21, to ensure that they're receiving their services in their least restrictive environment. And as we go back to that continuum slide, looking at the services that the student needs, and not necessarily the student's disability. So provide ongoing professional development and coaching for our schools around scheduling for students with disabilities. As we look at our second priority, ensuring access to high-quality instruction, working very closely with our current multi-tiered system of supports around academics and behavior, and this is prior to a student being identified to receive special education services. And so really working closely, providing ongoing guidance and professional development for our student support teams and our 504 chairs, doing, using mandatory quarterly professional development, so that we're not over-identifying our students, but really putting those early intervening supports in place. Also, decreasing the number of students that receive special education services that are African-American that are being suspended. African-American that are being suspended. So, having cultural relevance professional development for our IEP chairs, for our principals, for our central office staff, really around behavior, trauma-informed practices, but really having those courageous conversations with those staff and providing that professional development. And then, to improve our post-secondary outcomes and transitions for our students with disabilities, so really collaborating and working very closely with our Office of College and Career Readiness, and providing professional development for all of our school counselors, as they are very instrumental in helping us to provide and plan for those post-secondary transitions. And so, our next steps, as we begin to implement the special education action plan, and for some of our action steps we began implementing this school year, rolling out the plan with ongoing professional development with those stakeholders, our community partners, our parents, our general educators and special educators, as well as our IEP chairs and our principals. With our Special Education Institute, what we're doing a little differently this year, we're asking schools to bring teams. So, this year, we're asking that an administrator, a general educator, a special educator, and IEP chair participate in the Special Education Institute, so that they're all hearing the same thing. Part of our sessions are going to be around the multi-tiered system of support. We're going to talk about SST and 504 and those supports. We're going to talk about post-secondary transitions, as well as transportation. We're also going to talk about trauma-informed, and we're going to talk about behavioral support. And also, new IEP chair professional development is also going to be a part of the Special Education Institute. We're also partnering with T-Talent and Organizational Development for the New Teachers Special Education Institute. And then, we're going to share our special education action plan during the CCAC, CCAC September meeting, and continue to work very closely with our parents during CCAC. Thank you, and are there any questions?
Commissioner Hassan, and then Commissioner McFadden.
So, thank you, Dr. Brooks and Macon. I appreciate the information in the report. It's a very, it's a comprehensive qualitative report. Wondering what the quantitative data is. How many, how many special ed students do we have? How many students on a 504 at each level of the LREs? How many kids are on a BIP? And then, even digging a little deeper, what are the demographics of those students? How many students are we exiting? How many students are we reducing their, their level of intensity of servicing? How many students are doubly gifted? And then, equity mapping that, are there schools, especially around students with behavioral disability potentials, that are over-identifying? Where are they coming from? So, all of that, I would love to see in something called a special ed report, so that would be great. Not that what you have isn't awesome. This is how you're addressing it, but there needs some more, some more quantitative behind it. So, we don't need it right now, but, and I can send you those things, because I'm sure you don't have much time.
Oh, no. Oh, no. We're going to sit here till we...
We are not going to sit here right now.
Oh, no.
But what I can give you right now is that we have, we have 15.4% of our students are receiving special education services, which is approximately 12,000 students. The other information I can definitely give for you.
And then, the other, the last piece is how we're tracking that students, especially in LREA C and above, or least, less restrict, are, or more restrictive than that, I'm sorry, are receiving their COMAR Minimum Arts Physical Education, Health Education experiences.
Dr. Santelisa is going to comment, but I'm going to, I want Lynda to respond to that.
I was going to do a very quick response in terms of the fact that we do, we do more in-depth quarterly reviews of what's happening in special education, and with that dashboard and more of the compliance-type things you're saying at the Teaching and Learning Committee meetings. That's all I wanted to let people know.
So, you could direct it, or stick it on as an appendix on the annual report, so that families that are looking for it...
We're going to have to continue to work on the balance between the committee work and the, and the board work, because it's, we haven't figured that out yet, let's just say. So, thank you. Yeah.
We just looked at this as a programmatic update, because we had did in the, the last update in Teaching and Learning, all those quantitative pieces, but we will make sure we answer all your questions.
So, I think Commissioner Hassan's right, it could be, and maybe this is just a clue, and then we'll table it, and we'll talk about it, is that when a presentation like this is made, so if some of us wouldn't have known, it was, if we didn't read all those documents, just flag it, and, and one item can be, this was reviewed in depth at the such-and-such Teaching and Learning Committee, please refer to the, please, and then just link us to the other documents, but, because I think that's a good, it's a good, it's a good question, and it was already answered, but we didn't know that.
Great. I really don't have anything else to say. I know you're all shocked.
I am, actually.
Exactly, I know. Okay, great. So, it's not to shock you. One of the things I will say, though, is I think we should pull out some of the key indicators that help communicate the progress. So, as we seek to bridge some of the information between the committee work, and, you know, thank you to Commissioner Chinia for, for making sure that that's bubbled up, I think what we might want to do is pull some, and maybe if the, if the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee has recommendations for, out of all of the data points for tracking purposes, that would be part of the full presentation, that might be one way to bridge, so that it's not going through the full data you all do, but enough to get to Commissioner Hassan's point, which is, how are we actually moving with kids and being able to talk about that in order?
And if I could just do 10 more seconds, I'm just really excited of all the work that they're doing, and the fact that we have been taking this year around a learning experience with the stat process, and we actually have an action plan of how to move forward that is connected back to those indicators that you're talking about. So, just really excited about what the future holds for special education in Baltimore City.
Commissioner McFadden.
Dr. Brooks, I just want to say that I loved your gown in that, in that video. It was incredible.
Go Bears.
Go Bears, yes. But, but also thinking as, as, and this is minor, and we can discuss it in Teaching and Learning later, but thinking about the blueprint and the leadership aspect, are we empowering IEP chairs with this robust updating and plans that you have for next steps, to do some of the in-school PD facilitation of, of a lot of this?
Yes, we actually are, and this is why we're customizing professional development, so that what IEP chairs are getting, they are then going back to their schools, and they're actually leading some of the work in their schools. Yes.
And principals also have that understanding, to give them that opportunity to make sure that that is happening regularly in the school.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. And Mr. Tucker, thank you, folks.
Dr. Brooks, I just wanted to jump in and say thank you for the parent who came here, and that, that you were just, you, you listened, and you spent time, and she felt heard, and I know that she probably had a million other things to do that day, but you took the time for her to be heard, and that actually, I think, is the most important thing. So, just thank you.
It sounded like there might be a little modeling needed for your staff, because whoever was doing this needs to not be doing that. Just saying. Commissioner Chinia?
Mine is really a follow-up to what Commissioner Cam just said. I was happy to hear that you're going to do some additional work with school teams around the 504 plan, because it sounds as though we probably need to help people to be able to understand those and implement them better.
Yes.
Thank you.
A teaching moment for us, I think, for some of us that aren't in, well, all of us who aren't in your shoes, and it was, it was kind of an awesome moment to see you called out that way. Thank you.
Can I jump in on the praise for Dr. Brooks? I just also wanted to say that I appreciate your working with charter schools, because I think the incident that we heard earlier was like, it was an alternative school where this was happening. And so, you providing that, those resources and guidance to those schools as well, I think is awesome. So, thank you.
Is there anybody who hasn't praised her that wants to?
We haven't met before, but I...
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, very much. Well-deserved praise, and appreciate the update.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to note the upcoming meeting list. The Operations Committee will meet here next on Tuesday, June 19th, at 10:00 in this room. As Commissioner Hassan noted at the beginning of the meeting, the Policy Committee will host the Board Forum on Equity Policy. This is sort of modeling a new way of looking at policy by getting input first and drafting second, on Tuesday, June 19th, at 4:00 in this room. Teaching and Learning on Tuesday, June 26th, at 9:00 in this room. There'll be a special public board meeting, following the Teaching and Learning Committee, at 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, June 26th, in this room. That is an abbreviated, it's, it's an abbreviated meeting, we're only going to vote on a PEP agenda, you're certainly welcome to attend, but it won't be as fun as it was tonight. And the PCCAB meeting says TBD, so can't say much more about that. Any more, I did, I said that first, you were top of the list. Anything else for the good of the whole?
Motioning.
We have a motion to adjourn. How, we have a second for that, and we have an amen from the crowd, amen. We had our first fight.